Yeah, it's.
Yeah, she's had two knee surgery. Two knee, two of them.
About six weeks in between.
Yeah, I'm so glad to know that and uh.
And if the clerk could please read the role.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Jackson.
We have a quorum. This is an opportunity for public comment. We do not have anyone in our audience at this point for public comment. So what we will do is move to, we have the minutes of April 15th. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the adoption of the minutes from April 15th, 2019.
I have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign, passes unanimously. We will now start on our departmental presentations. This evening, we have the Police Department, Human Relations and Community Service, and Information Technology. So we welcome the Chief, who's with us at this time, as well as from, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners, Clyde Carnegie, and I'm assuming the gentleman sitting with you is your new financial person. Is that correct?
That is correct. I was going to introduce him here in a second as well.
All right, thank you. So we will turn it over to you at this time.
Okay. Well, good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present LPD's FY '20 budget here this evening. Madam President, members of City Council, and the citizens of Lansing. As the Chief of Police for the capital city, I'm honored to present to you the FY '20 budget for the Lansing Police Department. This evening, I am joined by the Budget Chair Committee, Police Board of Commissioner Clyde Carnegie, and our new Budget Control Supervisor Joe McClure. I also want to thank all the members of the Police Board of Commissioners for all their dedication and commitment to serving our citizens here in the city of Lansing, and also providing that support to the Lansing Police Department. I would also like to acknowledge our former LPD Budget Control Supervisor Jim Delain. Jim put a lot of work and effort into this FY '20 budget until we hired Joe here a couple months ago. I would also like to thank Mayor Andy Shore for his continued support and commitment to the Lansing Police Department. He's always made public safety his top priority, and we appreciate his commitment to the Lansing Police Department as well. Would also like to thank the City Council for your continued support of departmental by providing us equipment and resources and tools in order for us to keep our city safe. The Lansing Police Department is honored to serve our community. We've been blessed with a longstanding history of community support and a willingness to foster solid partnerships with the Police Department. We are grateful for the confidence and trust they have put in us to keep their families safe and their businesses secure. I would also be remiss if I did not thank the ones who wear the badge, that put their lives on the line each and every day. You know, every day, I'm amazed on the courage, the professionalism, and the kindness that our officers demonstrate. And I'm proud of the men and women of the Lansing Police Department, and will forever be grateful for the work they do each and every day. In putting together the FY '20 budget, every dollar allocated was reviewed and justified to ensure that it reflects the mission, vision, and values of the Lansing Police Department. I'm pleased to announce that LPD's FY '20 budget will continue to provide all the core services delivered by the Police Department while we continue to keep the city safe. I am going to move on to the PowerPoint presentation that you have in front of you and for our citizens at home. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, our Police Board of Commissioners, I think that this is, gets overlooked for many times, this is our civilian oversight for the organization. We have eight citizens here in the city of Lansing that have dedicated and volunteered their time to support our citizens and our Police Department, and I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for their continued service. When you look at the Lansing Police Department's mission statement, it's pretty simple. In everything we do, we apply to this. It's to maintain order, preserve public safety, and to foster a better quality of life, making our city a better place to live, work, and visit. You talk about that vision, we know that we can't do it without our community. And so it's about building partnerships and utilizing innovative strategies for a safer, stronger community. Several years ago, we put into our budget, as the President's Task Force came out on 21st Century Policing back in 2015. And there were six main pillars that was really put towards law enforcement to try and focus our strategies, our resources, our budgets, and I'm not going to read all six of those pillars, but those are in front of you, and I can tell you that all six of those pillars are addressed in our FY '20 budget. When you talk about our philosophy, it really comes down to two foundations for the Lansing Police Department. It's about police legitimacy and community policing. Everything that we build off of our strategies and our interactions and interventions with our citizens, it comes down to those two solid foundations. And in order for us to accomplish our mission, it really starts and ends with the preservation of life. And that means everyone that we come in contact with, every intervention, every shift, we want to make sure that everyone goes home to their loved ones. Not only our police officers, but everyone we come in contact with. And again, utilizing that community policing, that community engagement model, what we build so much of our day-to-day interactions off. But we implement a crime-fighting strategy that really focuses on technology, crime analysis, and dedicated police services, whether it's a visible police officer in a neighborhood, a detective going one-on-one with a victim and a witness, or any of our support staff that we utilize each and every day. We really base that upon a smart policing model, a data-driven approach, where we continue to work with our neighborhoods, our businesses, and schools to build those strong partnerships throughout the year.
I'm going to stop. Apparently, we're about a slide behind, so we, okay.
Okay. So at this point, for City TV, before I move forward on the details of the FY '20 budget, I do want it to wrap up 2018. I have a really short video that I'd like to play for you.
Thank you. I don't know.
So at this point, for City TV, before I move forward on the details of the FY '20 budget, I do want it to wrap up 2018. I have a really short video that I'd like to play for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I know you didn't hear the music, but there is music attached to that video. But we will send that out, and it'll be on our website as also. So in there, you can see a lot of community engagement, and that's a lot what our police officers do each and every day. So moving on to the FY '20 details, if you look at, it's going to be slide number 11. When you look at the money that is set aside for the city general fund, it's about $139.5 million. The Police Department's got about 32% of that, or $44.8 million. When you look at our general fund budget, there's two numbers there. There is the general fund, which is at $44,885,000, and then our overall budget is at $45,986. That second number, that overall budget, includes our drug forfeiture accounts, the federal, state, and tri-county metro. So that's the difference between those two accounts. When you look at the FY '20 budget, again, we've been very grateful, very lucky, and supported by the members of not only City Council, the mayor, but our citizens and our millage that passed for the second time. That puts $3.2 million into our FY '20 budget at 1.5 mils. I'm pleased to also announce that 100% of that millage is also going towards personnel. So the money from the millage is going to police officers. When you look at the general fund dollars increased, and I'm on slide 14 at this point, that's about a 3.9 increase, or $1.7 million. Again, that's for salary benefits, overtime, and operating, and a few equipment costs. So that's where the 3.9% increase comes from. When you look at our proposed budget, it also entails all of our core services, and when you look at those personnel, we have 244 total employees, 203 sworn employees, and 41 civilians. I'm on slide 16 at this point. When you look at our personnel cost, 85%. 85% of our budget is for bodies. That's our personnel. So when you look at the totality of our budget, the majority of it is our police officers, our detectives, our support staff. That is about a 2.3% increase over last year. And I want to just mention in there, yes, it's an increase for salary and fringe benefits, but we did have a transition in leadership with the Parking Enforcement Division, and so we were getting a portion of that from the Parking Enterprise Fund. That is now back to the general fund. That sergeant is back into the LPD budget for FY '20. When you look at our operating costs, it's about $6,634,000. That's about 15% of our general fund budget. When you break that down even further, it's about a 3% increase for FY '20 on our operating cost of about $191,272. That's the 3% increase. The reason for those increases was for IT and technology needs, some uniforms and vests. The cost of buying that has gone up. We don't get as much federal dollars for our vest anymore. Cost of equipment, and just really making an organizational change is that we took the school crossing guards from personnel and pushed that over to the operating cost. That is done on a contract with a vendor. So we don't have city employees. We use a vendor to make sure that we have our crossing guards staffed. I'm on slide 19, if you're following along. This is for the equipment budget. When you look at our equipment costs for FY '20, it's about $244,000. Just a few of the items that are in there. We needed to get some replacement tasers, replacement canines. We're going through some transition with our dogs retiring and some promotions. Our dive unit needed some replacement suits. We are also asking for a robot for our tactical team. As you can imagine, as we try and utilize different tools, different strategies, so we're not putting bodies in front of confrontations. The robot has the ability to deliver a phone, it has the ability to have a camera on it, it has the ability to open doors, and so again, this is one of those lifesaving tools that we think is needed for our tactical team. Another issue that we have really progressed on is the ability to utilize smartphones in the field. So so many of our officers in the department use a cellphone on a day-to-day basis. So the goal here is to get every uniformed police officer a smartphone, so they can do their day-to-day, their shift business, whether it's making phone calls, utilizing the technology, especially the body-worn cameras, the in-car fleet. They can tag photos, they can download videos. It's been really a cost-effective, creating efficiencies within the organization. The other one I wanted to highlight was also a video phone for our start negotiators. If you look at technology, again, the ability to have a camera on the other end of that phone, rather than just utilizing the phone, gives us a tactical advantage, if you will, when we have these type of situations. So that's just a brief recap of some of the equipment costs that we have for the FY '20 budget. As far as capital improvements for FY '20, there's a couple that the Lansing Police Department is asking for. The first one is replacement of our in-car computers. They are currently out of warranty. They're wrapping up here in July. They will be out of warranty after four years, and so we did ask for $275,000 to replace those in-car computers. And as you can imagine, it really is one of those vital pieces of equipment that our officers use, not only for the 911 calls that they get, but our records management system, our NC4 Street Smart, the video cameras that we utilize, the body-worn cameras, and so again, just like with anything else, technology needs to be replaced, and so that's one of the capital improvement plans for FY '20. The other two that are in there, the first one is trying to create some additional efficiencies and effectiveness of our Special Operations Section, which currently is housed off-site. We're trying to bring them back into the LPD Ops Center, and we're also at a unique time, as you've probably heard throughout the year, that forfeiture dollars are being utilized in the rules and the regulations that go around forfeiture. All drug units in the state of Michigan are going to really struggle to utilize the same financing model, the funding mechanisms that they've had in place. So we're trying to cut costs, create some synergy between both of the drug units and putting them together at the Ops Center. The other one is for replacement of two of our decelerators at the shooting range. The shooting range was built in 1998, and I want to kind of clarify that a little bit. There's a structure that was built prior to 1998 that housed our helicopters that we no longer have, but the range was replaced. It was an outdoor range, and was built with a lot of concrete. Well, these decelerators, there's four of them, and two of them are at failure that need to be replaced this fiscal year, and the other two, we're going to put in some repairs, but they're also going to need to be replaced here in the near future. So we are replacing two of those in the FY '20 CIP budget. The only other thing I would point out for both of these items, we are going to be utilizing some of our forfeiture dollars for these two items. Moving on to slide 22, good news. We are asking to add another community policing officer. We currently have 10 authorized police officers for our community policing areas, and we are asking to add an 11th position. So much of what we do on a daily basis, we rely on our citizens, we rely on our support staff to help our police officers and detectives. In today's day and age, to not have a crime analysis unit for a city our size to deal with our crime issues, you gotta be able to have that support staff to give the tools to the officers, so they can actually go out in the field and do the job. So we're doing a little bit of a unique thing here. We are very fortunate to have Michigan State University, one of the best criminal justice programs in the country, just down the street from us. And so we've been working with Michigan State University, and we have proposed to enter our partnership with them on a graduate-level crime analysis paid internship program. These are going to be high-level crime analysts that are working towards PhDs, and they're going to spend time embedded with the Lansing Police Department. And so we're asking to utilize some funds to hire two of those on a contract basis in FY '20. And again, they are going to be paid interns from the Michigan State University program. And of course, some of you are familiar with our Police Athletic League, which has been around for a long time. We are going through just a little bit of a reinvention of our Police Athletic League. Not to get into a lot of details, we're just looking to really re-energize what that program can do for our youth here in the community. And so we did put some money set aside. We want to thank now-retired Detective Michelle Bryant, who ran it for so many years, retired in the last year or so. So we've asked for a small amount to get that rejuvenated, and it's going to be really in concert with some other things that are going on here in the city of Lansing, but there's a connection with our youth to our police officers. I did want to touch a little bit on LPD hiring in 2018 and 2019. So as you can imagine, in my tenure now, which is now six years, we have hired 123 police officers in six years. So it comes with a few challenges, and we've had a few learning lessons along the way, but I'm pleased to say, because of our partnership with the HR Department, we have now been recognized as a national best practice for recruiting and hiring police officers in the country. We recently presented at the Police Executive Research Forum, and I actually do present for Michigan State University. So I think the model here in Lansing is really being replicated throughout the country as some of the best practices. So just to kind of break that down, just in 2018 and into 2019, that we have either hired or in the process of completing the hiring process here in May and June, 38 police officers, six detention officers, three cadets, a police social worker, and you got to meet Joe McClure here a couple of minutes ago, a Budget Control Supervisor, two Secretary 26s, with a third one getting set to start here in April, and three Police Tech 26s, which really spent a lot of our time, their time, going through our Freedom of Information requests down on central records. So that's a lot of hiring in a year and four months timeframe. A little bit of a recap again, we focus a lot on gun violence here in the city of Lansing. And I just wanted to point out again, in 2013, we were averaging over 200 shootings a year. And the shootings are really broken down in several different categories. This is not all victims, but these are all shootings that we can verify that a firearm was discharged in the city. In 2018, our number was at 104. So we have reduced shootings here in the city of Lansing since 2013 by almost 50%. We entered into a secured city partnership with the Michigan State Police, and I just wanted to give you a brief update on those four focus areas. Those four focus areas were Churchill Downs, Baker Street, Comstock Park, and Northtown. As a result of our partnership with the Michigan State Police, we've seen a 17% decrease in violent crime in those four areas. Three out of the four all saw anywhere from 15 to 24% reductions in violent crime, and we did have a small little increase in Northtown at 2.7%. When we really break that down a little bit more, that's a result of aggravated assaults more than anything else. I think it's always important that, you know, we share our goals, not only internally, but also externally. And the number one goal, as I've mentioned before, is that preservation of life, making sure that everyone goes home. Our goal is to also reduce homicides by 15%, have a homicide clearance rate of 85% or higher, and I will tell you, the national average, the national average for homicide clearance rate is 59%. Last year, we hit our target of 85%. And again, I think that speaks to the relationship that we have with our community members, the trust that they have that the Police Department is going to utilize every resource, put in as many hours as it takes to make sure that justice is there for the families involved. When we look at our violent crime, again, our goal is to reduce it by 15% along with our shootings. On page, our slide 27, just to continue, we want to reduce our aggravated assaults to below 875. When we look at our aggravated assaults, a lot of that is due to domestic violence as well. And so the seventh goal there is to decrease domestic violence by 15%. We are in the process of trying to implement and complete that implementation of our first phase of a real-time crime center. I think when you look at technology that is available and to put the resources into a space that you can provide that real-time crime intelligence, video, radio, social media into the hands of the police officers, it gives us an advantage to solving crimes and bringing justice at a faster pace. We would also, we have plans to complete our three-year strategic plan in FY '20, and and detectives, either in the car or at their desktop, a mobile PD's app, our smartphones, and then a satisfaction survey for our citizens. Again, also in FY20, we're going to be implementing several new community policing and crime prevention initiatives, again, while expanding and relying on our partnerships and growing those partnerships with our Violent Crime Initiative, our MSP Secured City Partnership, our Public Safety Partnership, which is our national program. And then, of course, we have ATF and the FBI embedded with our Violent Crime Team. So, when you look at the FY20 budget, it continues to fund all of our core services here at the Lansing Police Department, making sure that our crime fighting strategies and our community policing models all are put into play so we can accomplish our mission. And I think it's always important, again, that when, you know, we have task force and recommendations that we utilize as a blueprint, not only as a profession nationally, but also here at the Lansing Police Department. So, all those do come into play in this FY20 budget. Real quickly, I think when you look at the budget, when we break that down category by category, again, those six pillars of community policing and outreach, increasing training and officer wellness. And I will tell you, we have increased our training by 200% over the last several years. We do a lot of on-duty training that is helping our officers through de-escalation, crisis intervention, mental illness, and again, expanding our community policing programs. On Slide number 31, when we talk about recruiting and hiring, FY19, we did utilize the front-loading model, and that it does continue here into FY20 as well, to kind of take care of all of our future retirements that are going to happen in 2020. And of course, technology is a basis of a lot of what we do. So, lastly, in closing, I want to thank the men and women of the Lansing Police Department. I want to thank Mayor Andy Shore, City Council, our Police Board of Commissioners, and the citizens of Lansing for your continued support. You know, I said it earlier, I'm amazed at the work that our police officers do. And if you could ride with them and walk with them and see day-to-day the commitment and the level of service they provide each and every shift, you would be amazed right alongside me. So, with that said, I am available for questions you may have.
Questions from council members. Councilmember Washington, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief, for a really nice presentation. I think you all do a wonderful job, and you are very responsive. Whenever I email, text, I can't believe how quickly you get on things, so kudos. I just have a couple of questions. How long, how much longer are we in this partnership with the MSP?
Well, they haven't said any deadlines to us. I did meet with the new Colonel. Obviously, they have a new leadership over there as well. But I can tell you, I don't want to speak for all the other secured city partnerships in the state of Michigan, but we have just an absolute wonderful relationship with the Michigan State Police. They have informed us that they are not making any changes here in 2019. And we hope that we can continue that partnership into the future. But I still think, you know, in fairness to the Colonel, he's got to figure out where he's going to go as an agency. But again, I would put the city of Lansing up to any of the other 11 cities as far as how strong our partnership is here. It is making a difference.
I believe it is. I just wondered if this was going to be ongoing, or if it's year to year, or I think they're doing a great job.
Yeah, so far, so good.
Okay. At one time, we had consideration for cold cases. How are we? Did the folks that you brought on board make a difference in solving them?
Yeah, we did. So, we've had Detective Tracy Jones is currently our cold case detective. And we use some outside consultants to kind of go through some of those cases. And certainly in today's day and age, when you look at forensic evidence, DNA, it's really adding a whole nother layer. I can tell you, we've made some good progress on cases. We have been able to at least come up with what we believe potentially those that are responsible. And now, we've just got to work through some of our investigations and putting the evidence together. And we're optimistic that we could see one of those cases solved here in 2019 as well.
Awesome. That's great news. Could you explain to me, what is START? S-T-A-R-T?
Yeah, that's our Special Tactics and Response Team.
Okay.
A lot of people refer it to as a SWAT team. It's a tactical team.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a couple more. Thank you for the CPOs. I know the neighborhoods I have them in. They are the number one reason I believe that crime is down. I really appreciate it, particularly in Baker Denora and North Town and East Kalamazoo. They make such a huge difference. And you have given us some stellar officers to fill those spots. The other thing is Narcan, or whatever you call it, that's being funded right now by grants, correct?
Yeah, currently, right now, we have not spent any, you know, city dollars on getting naloxone. We've gotten them through a couple of grants. We hope that that will continue. We have some other relationships. And certainly, with our police social worker, if we get to that point, we have another resource that can assist us in getting that naloxone. But there's no doubt about it, between LPD and the Lansing Fire Department, you know, naloxone's been pushed over 500 times in the last couple of years.
What's the cost of that, if we should lose grants?
You know, there's two different models. So, there's the nasal spray, and then there's this injector. The nasal spray is about $25 a kit. The injectors are a little more expensive, around $95 apiece. So, you know, we have both, but we'll continue to, I think the grant dollars are going to be there. My understanding in listening to the President's budget is that there's going to be a lot of funding, again, for the opiate epidemic that we're faced.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple more. The social worker, have you seen a lot of positive from that?
Yeah, I will tell you, you know, we're giving her some time to kind of build her resources, her connections. But I will tell you, we're very fortunate that Jan Bidwell, you know, she comes with years of experience. She's been working in our detention facility already. So, she had a little bit of a groundwork of how we function. But already, she's being deployed out there. We're sending her to other areas of the country that have deployed a social worker. And, you know, I'm not familiar with anyone else here in the state of Michigan that has a social worker embedded with the police department. I'm not saying that they don't, but I, you know, we don't have a lot of options here in the state of Michigan. But she's making those contacts. She's building out her resource list. She's meeting with community mental health. She's riding with the police officers. We've gotten her engaged in a lot of those three categories already.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just kind of wondered how that was working out. I'm hoping we're not sending her away from the city a whole lot. We kind of need our employees right here.
No, I think, you know, just like with anything else, in order for us to, you know, have best practices and lessons learned, there's nothing better than going out and seeing it hands-on, embedding them for a day or two with another agency. But no, she's gone to, she's going to hit, I think, two cities that are doing this, and then she's going to implement some of those best practices for us.
Okay, good. Because when they're not here, they're not working here. But I get what you're saying. The only other thing I have, Chief, is the CPOs. It's my understanding, and I don't mean this critically, that for the past two years, our overtime budget has been burned out, like within the first six months, which causes the CPOs to have to be called away from their area quite often, and that sometimes it leaves us short. Is there anything you can say to address that? But one more thing, and then you can address them both. With the FBI embedded with us, are we doing anything to hit the human trafficking in our area?
Yep. So, I'll hit the first question. If I forget the second part, please remind me. But I will tell you that, you know, the philosophy behind community policing, we know it works. So, our goal is to try and get our CPOs 100% of the time in their neighborhoods. You know, depending on the day of the week, the time of the year, the call loads that are going out, you know, we know that we have to pull them off their neighborhoods to address the priority-one calls that are happening. You know, so, we strive for that 100%, but they're hitting it about, I would call it, you know, this is a guesstimate, about 60% of their shift, they're in their neighborhoods. And so, they rearrange their schedules to hit the problems that are going on in their neighborhoods. So, I will tell you, the overtime is not directly related to the community policing officers. When you are running, you know, with the minimums, if someone calls in sick, someone gets hurt. And it's not all just the road patrol, the overtime, right? It's our detention unit. It is our detectives that come in on violent crime. You know, we've taken an aggressive approach to utilizing our resources on all of our non-fatal shootings, just like it would be a homicide, because we know that that's going to help us keep our city safe. Those are the ones that we can really accomplish that mission on. So, I would tell you, the overtime is not necessarily tied to the community policing officers. What we've really started doing is embedding our Violent Crime Initiative with our community policing officers. So, we kind of use that as a force multiplier, so they can address those issues in their neighborhood. The goal is 100%. We're about 60% right now.
Okay. I just wondered if maybe we needed more officers if we're burning up our overtime so quickly. The other question I had is, we have more sketchy businesses coming up, and I guess I'm wondering what we're doing to address the trafficking of young women?
Yep. So, I can tell you, with our relationship with the FBI, and it's not necessarily the one that's embedded with us, but if we have to, you know, we utilize whatever resources we have. We have had active investigations. We have had convictions when it comes to human trafficking. Without getting into the strategics of what we got going on right now, I can tell you that we are addressing those quality-of-life issues, those life-impacting investigations with our youth, not only here in the state of Michigan, all over the country. You know, human trafficking is still an issue that we got to wrap our hands around. And so, we do have resources. We do utilize our state and our federal resources. But those are, they're complex, and when they go outside of our city, that's where our federal partners come into play.
I just noticed more businesses popping up, so I just wanted to show you.
Yep. And I can tell you, you know, on our daily list of things to do, that's in there, and it's being addressed as we speak.
That would be Councilmember Garza, then Hussein, then Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Nice
... station. Thank you. Appreciate everything you do. Want to do whatever I can to make sure you guys do your job safely possible. That was from me. Good to see you, sir. I graduated from all the courses. It's all good to see you.
Are you in trouble still when you get back there?
Hey, hey, that's another discussion. But anyways, Jody answered a couple of questions, or you answered a couple of questions. But as far as the community police officer goes, I know we had a sidebar about a week ago about possibly we might add another one to the North Town or North Side. Can you speak a little bit on that? And if, because my Ward War II is the only one that doesn't have a community police officer. I know you know this, just for everybody else that doesn't. But is there, if we don't get one to the second ward, is there a possible chance to rotate them, just to see a police presence in my, in Ward II?
Yeah, I will tell you, you know, every year, we kind of reevaluate, where's the best spot to put our community policing officers? Yes, we use data. We use some historical, you know, boundaries. Where does the officer make the most impact? Because sometimes you can put them in an area that it's just too large, you know, that we like to utilize foot patrols, bicycle patrols. But really, a lot of it comes down for calls for service and crime data. And if it's a hot area, we'll put a community policing officer in there, and then we'll remove them and put them someplace else. For example, we did that in the Richwood Conrad area, Orchard Court area. And so, you know, we got to a point where we couldn't really justify putting a community policing officer there based upon the crime levels that were there. They weren't very high. So, we redeploy that someplace else. But we're constantly looking at, where's the best spot to put those community policing officers? Then, as always, I'll work with the mayor's office to, you know, to determine where's the best fit for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Jackson.
Very much appreciate everything that you do, truly. And I would echo the statements made by Councilman Washington. The responsiveness is tremendous, and I very much appreciate that. With that being said, I'm trying to understand your numbers just a little bit better. When you look at 203, so, you know, we would be moving from 202 funded positions to 203. What is the national average? Do you know what the national average is per 1,000 residents? I believe here in the city of Lansing, we're at about 1.74 per 1,000 residents. Is there a number out there in terms of the national average?
Yeah, this is where we enter the great debate as to, you know, how many police officers is enough for a community. So, one of the older models breaks it down just for that, per 1,000. If you follow that model, it says 2.4. So, if you were to look at Lansing's population of 117,000, with 203 sworn police officers, you know, we're at about that 1.6 to 1.7 range. The national average would be 2.4 for that. But it really comes down to, what does the community want? How many hours of unobligated time do you want your police officers? Right now, our schedule is to try and get at least 30% of their shift to deal with just being a presence or doing proactive policing in a neighborhood. You can go up to as high as 50%, 60%. How much time do you want your police officers? How many cases do you want your detectives to have, right? So, some of our detectives have 40 to 70 cases at one time, you know. So, it all depends on how many police officers you want to address the issues. If you want to have more community policing officers, do you want to dedicate, say, to have those community policing officers are going to spend 100% of their time in their neighborhoods unless there's a major issue going on in the city or police officers, you know, asking for help, and they have to leave their neighborhood to assist on that. So, you know, it's a great debate in law enforcement, but if you use that model, it would be 2.4.
Okay. So, if we're going to use 2.4, we would be at about 278 officers in the city of Lansing, which puts about 75 short. I'll tell you what I want. I want to make sure that the police department is staffed appropriately, so that we can absolutely not only prioritize some of the things that Councilman Washington referenced in terms of violent crime, human trafficking, illegal gambling establishments, but that we can also be proactive and preventative, that we're actually patrolling our neighborhoods appropriately, making sure when we talk about community policing, I think so often we talk about the 10 community police officers. But it would be fantastic if all of our police officers had the liberty to engage the community in the way that we know they need to be. And so, you know, just anecdotally, one of the number-one concerns we hear about when we go to Neighborhood Watch meetings and Neighborhood Association meetings is the speeding, and the fact that, you know, our traffic division is, in my opinion, incredibly understaffed and under-resourced. And they're really putting out fires all across the city. And to be quite frank, a lot of those fires they're putting out, you know, I'm conveying them to you, and you're obviously going down the ladder in order to get them out there. But they're really moving, you know, from one part of the city to another. But they're really addressing issues that are widespread, although they might be, it's almost complaint-based. I mean, these issues are widespread, you know, throughout our community. So, I really want to see you guys staffed appropriately. What would happen, in terms of understanding the numbers, could you tell me, if you back out command, if you back out school resource officers, if you back out special operations, if you back out, how many officers do we actually have that are patrolling the streets of Lansing?
Well, we have approximately, give or take, 96 that are assigned to our road patrol for the sectors. And I would tell you, you know, it comes down to, what can the city afford? You know, I don't think anyone would argue that, hey, if we could add more police officers, we'd all love to do that. I've had many conversations with the mayor and others throughout the city. It's what can we afford, right? And so, when you look at, when you look at the breakdown of where our police officers are, there are certain aspects that we have a responsibility for, like subpoenas being delivered. If subpoenas don't get to the witnesses and the victims, and the cases don't get adjudicated in the courts, we don't get convictions. So, one of those roles is we got to serve subpoenas, right? When you look at the school resource officers, if, you know, the number of calls for service that we have at our three high schools, when we don't have our school resource officer there, we're pulling people off the road that's going into the schools. They're not connected. You know, there's where your community policing in the schools are. You know, they have that connection with them already. So, you know, when you start breaking down, like our violent crime impacting, if we did not, we've tried it without the violent crime impact team. And again, you're not having an effective strategy to focus on those individuals that are, you know, committing the crimes. You know, it's no different in Lansing than it is all over the country, in that about 5% of our population is responsible for 80%, 90% of our crime. So, to be able to focus on those that are committing the crimes. So, if you pull one person from one unit to another, you know, you're taking away those responsibilities that we're tasked with. And so, you know, what's the magic number? You know, we've done resource studies and allocation studies, you know, and whether you're on eights, tens, or twelves, we've done the 12-officer model. You know, fatigue comes into play. And I don't think it's a good idea to put our police officers in 12-hour shifts. Will that get you a few more bodies on the road? Yeah, but they're not engaged in our community policing model. At least, that's been our experience. experience.
Well, I think you asked a good question. So when we talk about what can we afford, that's exactly what I think this council is trying to determine. So when we look through the budget, and, you know, obviously from 2006 to 2016, we had, you know, $60 million cut from the general fund budget, and of course, the police department did not go unscathed. And so my understanding is that at the peak, you know, we had some 302 officers, we're down to 202. So as we start to see these 3.9 and 4% increases into the general fund in terms of revenue, I think it's imperative that every single dollar is spent on a critical service or a critical position. And as I look through this budget, I'm not certain that's happening. I would have loved to see maybe three to four officers added this year, we can't obviously do it in one fell swoop, but again, I think it is our responsibility. When you look at a community that can retain residents, that can attract residents, can, you know, retain and attract businesses, public safety is at the very top of the heap. You look at public safety, you look at infrastructure, you look at parks, you look at public services, you look at, but for me, public safety is always going to be right up at the top, and I know for a fact, you know, I interface with your officers in Neighborhood Watch meetings and Association meetings just about every night of the week. They absolutely, in my opinion, are doing the absolute best job they can. I think we have some of the best nation, area officers in the nation, but I do think they're understaffed at this point. I listen to the scanner, it's call saturation almost always, we, you know, there's mutual aid requests all the time, and so I really would like to see us start to build back capacity within the police department. But I do appreciate your comments. Just one, I actually had a bunch, but I'm not going to ask every question. I do have a question pertaining to PAL, and I cannot remember, with regards to the midnight basketball program last year, I can't remember whose budget that was a part of, but I am wondering if that program has went away, if we're not budgeting for that any longer. My understanding is that was supposed to run from mid-June to August 25th, it was supposed to run every Friday, Saturday. The purpose of that, I thought that program was similar to what we're trying to accomplish with the PAL League, so I'm wondering where, where we're at with that, and how we did last year on that particular program.
So that is included in the funding for the My Lansing Program, and Bishop Maxwell has been working with, I know Pat Gillespie's involved, Kelly Dean, and some other folks, there's a 501(c)(3) that's in, that's been put together to work on that program. But I will say, interestingly, how the program did, that's something we've struggled with in terms of metrics and measuring some of these programs, and so we actually, some of the work that Andy Crawford is doing, we have a Harvard Fellow coming this summer, paid for by Bloomberg Philanthropies, to look at our youth services and the impact of whether or not they're working, or whether we should invest more significantly in them, or, you know, change around how we're doing them, and so we're going to be, have someone that's coming into town for free for us from Harvard to measure all these programs and look at the impact.
Samantha, does that mean that that's in the mayor's budget?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so when we get to the mayor's budget, we'll have that opportunity.
I would just add that, you know, we did get, successfully got a public, well, we got a grant, it's the PSN Project Safe Neighborhood Budget. And so it wasn't always about convictions, it's also about giving back in the community policing model again. So we did get a grant, and we're going to be assisting in that midnight program. But I would say that PAL is designed for the, a little bit of the younger kids, where the midnight basketball was for our young adults, if you will.
Okay, we have Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. Good evening. As critical as I may sound sometimes, you know, all indications point that you're doing a great job, and same with the whole department, so I appreciate that. I just have a few areas, I'll start with the easy one. Homicide clearance rate, is that arrest or conviction?
It is arrest. So, but I will tell you, I, you know, off the top of my head, just about every single arrest that we've had, we've had convictions on. You know, there was, there was one case, I think it was in 2017, we made an arrest, got dropped pending further investigation, reissued about six months after that, but I will tell you that, you know, we take great pride in that, and we want to make sure that we get it right the first time, and making sure that we bring justice to the families. But those, those are arrests, but I will tell you, without 100 percent, the stats in front of me, most of those are convictions as well.
Thank you. For personnel, are there vacancies? Because I heard you say something about best practice hiring, that we go around and show other people, and we're front-loading, are there vacancies?
Technically, there's not any vacancies as we speak right now. We're actually front-loaded, with the understanding that they are currently in the police academy, they're slated to graduate here on May 3rd, and so that we'll be getting, we are slated to get a minimum of 13 that will be starting on May 6th, and then we have another handful that we're going to be starting shortly after that. So in, in June, if you will, we'll have about 24 people in our field training program, and we will be front-loaded up till July 1st as of today. We will have plus five come July 5th.
Great. There's a lot of talk about community policing, and, you know, we all have the picture of the officer on the bike, talking to kids, you know, maybe informally working out things that can be, but then you mentioned that you embedded the VCI with them. Is that like a practice that's widespread, or I guess where's the decision? Because it just seems when, I don't know, maybe can you explain that a little better?
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, you hear the term suppression units, right? Or you hear, you know, a violent crime impact team. I think what's unique about the Lansing model is that they'll go, they'll spend their time to shop with a cop, they will go out on our community events, on National Night Out, they will do things that aren't about tracking down the most violent offenders. So, you know, they bring a community policing model. Let me just say is that, listen, even though you're, you might be assigned as a community policing officer, that is a philosophy embedded throughout the organization, is to treat people with dignity and respect, acts of kindness. The number of times that our officers have bought meals, clothes, basketballs, basketball hoops, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. That's just because you're assigned a community policing officer, doesn't mean that those philosophies aren't being, you know, demonstrated throughout their days.
Sure. Are the, I'll pass on that. So forfeiture, I know there's some line items, and I know that you explained it a little better, but is there, just help me understand, is there any place in Lansing's budget that we have discretion over, where we have an earmark amount for forfeiture?
Well, I will tell you that some of our operating budget, we can't use forfeiture for the cost, the personnel cost, but we can use it to help operate. So heating, cooling, vehicles, equipment, buy money, but I will tell you, you know, we are at that point, more than likely, we started to have those conversations where I'm not sure that forfeiture is going to, you know, we're running down to that point where general fund dollars are probably going to be needed to fund our special operations section, potentially even as early as next fiscal year.
Okay, and I guess if we can really quickly turn to page 19 of 41, there's this line item, forfeiture, CO- co-op, IEC, where it has the 2018 actuaries, actuals is 38,000, and then it budgets up, and now it's, you know, like 300-some thousand. I just wonder what's the big difference in there over a couple of years?
Well, really, it comes down to cases. So we had, we had a particular good drug investigation that netted, I want to say, $375,000. This was, you know, a large-scale, major heroin, cocaine dealer that was coming through the city of Lansing, through other parts of Michigan and outside of Michigan. So as a result of that investigation, we got about $375,000 out of that investigation.
Okay, that clears that up a little bit, but each year, you don't say how much you are wanting to get or expect to get, or is it kind of?
No, we don't, and I think, you know, it's important to point out again, is that the, the police department is not in the business of generating revenue, right? Our job is to keep our community safe. And, you know, there are some tools, right? There's some tools there that have been proven to be effective against drug organizations, but again, we are not in the business of going on a drug raid and taking 50 items out of the house and, you know, putting them up for auction. Our job is to hold those responsible and to stop the action. So again, we are not in the business of generating revenue. Again, I think those, those forfeiture dollars, you know, we're going to be in the general fund dollars unless we get that rare case where you get $375,000. But now, the rules have changed, right? So you might not even see that unless you get a conviction.
Sure. So last area, you mentioned like technology, it's a lot of what we do, it's everywhere. There's so many different applications and programs, I guess, how is that vetted and decided on?
Well, you know, a lot of times, it'll, it'll start, you know, from the organization, we'll present that to the IT director and to the mayor's office and say, hey, we, we believe that this will increase our effectiveness and efficiencies, whatever that, that, you know, technology might be. For example, body worn cameras, right? So we believe that that was going to accomplish several missions, and that was to help us with prosecution of cases, that it would be an accurate depiction potentially of what happened on a, on a call for service, for complaints, and to also allow us for training purposes, is that, you know, if you've ever played a sport, right, and you videotape your practices in the game, and you spend the whole next day spending hours going over that film, we do the same thing. How can we get better? And we show that to the officers. So, you know, technology gets vetted a lot of different ways, but technology can be your best friend and your worst enemy at the same time. But we do believe that technology is a force multiplier for us, and that's exactly what that Real-Time Crime Center is all about, is to get, you know, all those, those pieces into the police officer's hand in a timely manner.
I guess this is my last follow-up. So you mentioned like the application we presented to the mayor or the IT, but wouldn't it be for you, since you're the, you know, law enforcement chief, and as far as like what you would want to see, or what works or doesn't work?
Well, I think, you know, I think everyone has a role in that, right? Is that, you know, I might have a great idea, and I might go to the IT director and say, hey, we want to implement this, and they say, well, listen, that's a duplication, or, you know, our system doesn't support that, or we have some cybersecurity concerns with that. Then I might take it to the mayor's office, and they might have something similar in the works, or, you know, a funding source that it gets, you know, either accelerated or delayed to another, another fiscal year. But I, I think it's a team effort, you know, my job is to present, you know, what I feel to be, you know, good ideas to make this organization, and to keep this city safe, and I think you have to consult with both IT and the mayor's office and finance, obviously, you know, there's a lot of things that we want every year that doesn't get on the budget, because there's only so many resources to go around.
All right, before I call, Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Dunbar, isn't also, chief, one of the ways in dealing with technology, the fact that there are different applications that are required because of your interaction with the state, the courts, the county, so some of those are predicated on the fact that in order to talk to or to be online with different ones, you have to go along with some of their IT requirements as well, is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct. I mean, obviously, for example, lean, right? That's a state system that every police department in the state of Michigan has to utilize, so you have to be lean compliant, and sometimes, you know, other programs just don't, don't blend well with that. You know, we're getting ready for, the county's getting ready for another radio project, so, you know, we have to make sure that we're, we have interoperability with our own systems and new CAD systems that we can't control all the time.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam President. I will add my appreciation, chief, for your officers. I, you know, I appreciate when you're out at various festivals or kids' events, there's always somebody out there on a, you know, on a bike or whatever, interacting, and I think that that's the best way to, you know, kind of reduce the stigma of, of police officers, but also, you know, you know, embed ourselves in the community and be community partners. I have, I have just a couple of questions. So when you say technically, there are no vacancies, that gets back to best practices, right? I mean, you know, for a city this size, and I think I asked the same question last year, for a city this size, you know, is there a number of officers that should be out and about on the streets?
Yeah, so kind of back to Councilmember Hussein's question, is that there's a couple of different philosophies on, you know, how many police officers are needed. If you utilize that, that per thousand, then it would say that, that we need to have 2.4 police officers for that. So then you're into that 260 range. It all depends on what can you afford, and what do you want your police officers focusing their time on?
Right.
You know, if you want your community policing officers to spend 100% of the time, then we know at 202, they're not spending 100% of their time in the neighborhood. So, you know, again, it comes down to what kind of, what kind of deliveries do you want from your police department, what kind of performance measurements? And so if you utilize that per thousand, which the experts will tell you can't rely on that 100%, it's 2.4, we're at 1.7.
And I appreciate the number, and I also appreciate how diplomatic you are in, in talking about it. I, I do think the 260 is probably the number I was thinking of, or I had a mind of. I want to ask you a question about the PAL and the midnight basketball. I guess, I think it's probably more of a question for Sam. I mean, that's, so has that whole program been moved over to Bishop Maxwell? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, excuse me, midnight basketball, Bishop Maxwell has always been the lead on that program.
PAL was different.
Okay, well, and PAL is now under, or is that still with you?
PAL's always been with the police department, just been a little dormant. We were, you know, we're just trying to re-energize. We're looking at clinics, we're looking at one-day camps, you know, engaging with some of our other community partners that are doing similar type of things, like the Boys and Girls Club.
Yep. All right, and then I, I think my final question is, you know, with, with the invention of body cameras, I, I can imagine that your FOIA requests are just ridiculous. And so how is that going? What's, I mean, how are you managing that, I guess, is the bigger question of, of all of those requests, and what's your turnaround time on the average?
So it's, again, there's not a great answer for this one, other than there's a lot of requests that come in, because you have discovery requests, you have FOIA requests, and we have a staff of five. So we have four police techs, and then we have a supervisor that oversees our freedom of information, and we work very closely with the city attorney's office as well. You know, depending on what the request is, where we're seeing our greatest struggles, or challenges, I should say, is the video portion of it. And so, you know, at times, those will still be delayed about 30 days, it's still taking us about 30 days to turn that video around. Discovery's got to go, you know, first to the prosecutor's office, whether it's redacted or not redacted, and then the city attorney's office, you know, they have their own request for video as well. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's just like, we knew this would be one of our challenges when we went to the body worn cameras, but it's not just body worn cameras, it's any video, right? Public safety video, any videos we get through investigations, cell phone stuff. Everything needs a search warrant, it just takes a lot more time. So to answer your question, we're about 30 days on video right now.
And what's the, I mean, can you give me an average cost of, of that whole, I mean, is the average cost increased? Is it, can you, can you give me that number since you started this whole program, from, you know, the body cameras to now? Do, can you give me kind of a general cost of how much it's cost the police department to process and, you know, fulfill these? And then finally, my statement is, I really appreciate your efforts on diversity. I think that you can be a model for success. I think you've gone above and beyond trying to, you know, attract diverse and qualified candidates. I'm always saying, you know, qualified candidates are the first thing, but the fact that you've, you know, you've also made diversity a priority is greatly appreciated. So then back to the...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you some quick stats on the hiring, and then I'll go back to your other question. So in 2016, of all the police officers that we hired, we were at a 40% minority female rate. 2017, 57%, 2018, 60%, and so far in 2019, 80% of our hires are either a minority or female. And so, you know, again, we, we want the best and the brightest, but it's also, you know, I got to give a lot of credit to our staff, Lieutenant Kraft, Sergeant Jason Spolma, and everyone in our department that is going out and seeking, you know, qualified candidates. And I think if they feel welcomed here in the city of Lansing, first and foremost, they feel welcomed at the Lansing Police Department, those numbers are just going to continue to increase for us. And so we're making great progress, but it is still one of our greatest challenges. We spend a lot of time and effort and resources.
But you said the key word is "they feel welcome," and so, you know, and that's what we're hearing, whereas maybe in some other departments are having some issues with that, but you, you know, they feel welcome, and that they're a welcome addition, and that, that's the most important part.
Family, family atmosphere is... Family, family atmosphere is what we strive for.
And then if you could get, um, to councilmember, well, to all of us, if you could get a breakdown on the cost of, of that, the question that councilmember Spitzley asked.
Yeah, and so, is the question more related to the FOIA? Or just what do we spend in a year on our body worn camera program?
I'm just curious, is how much, you know, how much of an increase of processing?
Yeah.
I know you've had to hire additional staff, I, 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 I know that. But, you know, in addition to the staffing and the processing and the redaction and, so I was, I'm, yeah, and the storage, I'm just curious how much more of a burden that is on your budget?
Sure, I, I will get you some, some better numbers, but I will tell you, you know, on the average, it takes us about four to five hours to process one hour of video. Uh, the numbers, yeah, keep going up drastically each and every year, but I'll get you those exact numbers, I don't have them in front of me right now, though.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. Um, I just quickly pulled up some stats. Um, and I appreciate you mentioning that, um, the, the numbers have to be analyzed. Um, because what I'm finding, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, one of the reasons that they might not be reliable is that it skews disproportionately, um, in favor of higher ratios in communities that are under 50,000 people, particularly under 10,000 people. And we have far more rural areas, um, and small communities across the country with police departments than we do major cities. So, based on that, um, I just looked up the UCR staffing statistics, and, um, right now, the total, um, in the Midwest, uh, and this is, and this matters by region, um, the total for a community our size, um, which is 100 to 250,000, is 1.8 per thousand. In the Midwest, on average, it's 1.7, in the West, it's 1.2, Pacific, 1.5, Mountain, 1.5, Northeast, 2.6, Southeast, 2.2. You can go through a lot of different areas with this. And then if you get under 10,000, um, which is where the, it skews, you can have it as high as 5.9 per thousand, 2.8, 3.7. Um, so I just, I wanted to point that out, that it's not just the number, it's not just the average, um, across the country. It actually says here in the FBI statistics that to get an accurate account, you should use a median, not an average. And to, to get closer to your own community, you've got to kind of skew out the, um, under 50,000. And right now, the, if you eliminate cities under 50,000 in, um, so you only consider cities of at least 50,000, the average across, and this is not even median, this is average is 1.66. So, we're pretty on par with that. I'm not saying we shouldn't have more officers, I'm just saying that I don't want anybody out there to think that we are drastically understaffed because the national averages and the national median prove differently.
Yeah, and I, I think that's exactly why they say you can't really rely on that formula, you know, cause you can look at the South compared to the Midwest, to the North, some have unions, some don't have unions. You know, Michigan's lost 4,000 police officers, the Midwest has been hit hard because of the auto industry, you know? So, there, there is, again, it comes down to each community. What can you afford? What kind of police services do you want?
All right, um, I have a few questions, then councilmember Hussein, and then we'll wrap this up and get on to our next department. Um, my first question has to do with the increase of a community police officer. Can you tell me what that cost is for a community police officer to have them on the street?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, when we broke this down, I want to say it was somewhere around 102,000 was the number, uh, that it was for year one.
Okay, and does that, that obviously includes benefits, but does it include the car, the...
Includes everything but the car.
Everything but the car?
Yep.
Okay. Um, what is the contract positions for, um, the level, the graduate level crime analyst? What are you looking at, um, as far as that cost?
Yep, so, I want to, if I remember correctly, is about $50,000 set aside, 20,000, uh, per intern, and then some equipment costs, like a computer, some licensing. So, it's $50,000 for two.
All right. And then for the PAL program that we've been talking about, you said there was a small amount in there, what are you talking about?
Ten, $10,000. We, we were fortunate to have some donations and, you know, if you remember years ago, Carol, that we had a lot of citizen...
Yes, I do.
...support for the PAL program, and, you know, a lot more cops to run it. But, you know, you know, it's, it's going to be run on some general fund dollars, but also donations as well.
Okay. Um, then the relocation of the special operations section. Um, I know, um, that there were some concerns, and I'm going back all the way to when we were North and South Precinct, about having special operations, um, near where the public was coming in and out, because we are talking special operations. Looking at the idea of giving it, uh, having it over at the Ops Building, what are you looking at as far as security and things like that to, um, make sure that we're not having situations that could compromise special operations?
Yeah, you know, obviously, we've, we've put in a lot of great thought into this, and I think at the end of the day, the pros outweigh the cons. And so, without getting into specifics as to what we're going to do to kind of, you know, protect the security...
But you're aware of those concerns?
Absolutely, we are aware of those concerns, and, and certainly, you know, we're going to have to do things a little bit differently, um, to, to ensure that their safety and, and uh, that they're protected, their identity is protected. But we believe, again, that the pros outweigh the cons in, in the efficiencies and effectiveness.
I'm not saying that it doesn't. Um, right now, we're paying $125,000 to the school district. Will that increase by having special operations there? Will we be utilizing more space?
We will not be, it's the same space, we're just readjusting a few of our areas, but we will not be spending more money based on, uh, the space. You know, if we utilize more electricity, then, you know, that will be prorated, but it will not be for more space.
How much longer do we have on the lease for the school district?
Well, currently, um, we're renegotiating the contract with the school district.
And hopefully it'll be lower.
Well, you know, in the spirit of confidentiality and contract negotiations...
Hopefully it'll be lower.
Uh, OCA, the mayor's office, is working with the school district on that as we speak.
Okay, well, I'm pushing for lower. Um, I want to talk about the in-car computer replacements, and whether you can answer this or whether it comes from finance. Is this coming out of, um, your budget under the capital CIP, or is it coming out of technology?
Tech, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, yes, that is coming out of the technology fund, the IT fund, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, um, the increase that you're talking about, um, with the salaries, is that based on, uh, the fact that the, you've got a contract coming up? Is that part of some money that's been built in for, um, contract negotiations?
Uh, I'm going to let Angie answer that, but, um, you know, the, the current wages are, are for what the contract is, uh, if it wasn't to change. I know that, uh, when Angie puts together, you know, when contract talks are coming, she, she handles that, uh, a little bit differently, but Angie, if you want to answer how you, uh, appropriate those funds?
So, the budget as it is proposed, uh, reflects what is known at, at this time, uh, which does not have those, because those contract negotiations have not begun. Uh, there is a council policy, though, that, uh, we hope would be re-upped with this, uh, with this upcoming budget that, uh, allows for transfers in when we have a, a settlement of a contract. So, then those wages then are, are added to that.
We currently have how many people from the state police working, um, with us at the city?
We have eight, uh, state troopers. Three are detectives, and the other five are, are troopers in uniform.
Has there been any thought, um, a- a- and I know this was discussed a little bit earlier, but looking at the fact that, again, this is on the good graces of state police and the governor, that if tomorrow that they had to move, they were taken away about integrating and looking at bringing people, um, increased in, in your request for employees? Have you, I mean, the amount of work that they're doing is obvious because they're here. So, what, what type of, of planning are you looking at with this?
Yeah, well, I think just like with, with everything that we do is that, you know, uh, we try and, and get as many resources as possible. And if the Michigan State Police Secured City Partnership was to go away, certainly we'd have some further discussions with, with the mayor and his staff as to, you know, what that, what that, you know, effect will be on the day-to-day operations on the violent crime impact team. But, you know, when you talk about resources, you know, I, I, there isn't a chief or a sheriff in this country that wouldn't say they want more police officers. But you got to utilize them the right way. Just having, you know, 60 more police officers, we don't utilize them the right way, then that's ineffective too. Police presence, you know, the research and studies will tell you, the presence of a police officer, even if they're walking through a neighborhood, will make a difference.
You talked about the front loading of police officers, but with the current, um, contract coming up, we do have the potential of 20, uh, police officers that could retire, um, with this contract. So, then we would be looking at, um, only four that you would have, um, from the numbers that you gave us just a little bit ago, looking at front loading?
Well, I, I can tell you, when, when I provide you these numbers, we've been working very closely with those officers, those employees that are within their two, two years of retirement. Um, and so, we have a pretty good feel for those that are still pondering whether they're going to leave early or not. Um, I, I wouldn't say that it's 20 unless something drastically changes. Uh, but a lot of those front loads are for, for FY '20 and '21 already. Uh, so, we've taken that consideration. Uh, we, we have another five that are going through background that we would send to the, uh, August Academy. So, we're already working towards that, uh, and that's why we've been very fortunate for the support, uh, from the mayor's office, uh, to give us that ability to front load those positions, uh, to kind of anticipate those that are leaving in 2020 as well. But we've taken that consideration. Yes, there might be a little bit of an increase, but that number, uh, I don't think anyone knows until contract negotiations start.
Well, someone that has been advocating for front loading, going back to Chief Bowles, um, it has been something I believe that has been extremely important and helps, um, in the integration of, of the department. Councilmember Hussein, and then we will, um, bring this to an end.
Yeah, just very quickly, I wanted to say that I appreciated, uh, councilwoman Dunbar's, uh, data. Um, I think that absolutely does not tell the whole story, and that's why I made it a practice of mine in my three years and some change on city council, and I know councilwoman Dunbar does the same, uh, in terms of engaging frontline, uh, workers. I think it's incredibly important that we are talking to our frontline workers each and every day, as much as I value command, um, you know, in terms of the people that are in the trenches, whether it be a cold officer, a premise inspector, a police officer, a firefighter, and asking them what do they actually need. And I will tell you, on condition of anonymity, every single police officer that I talk to says, "We need more bodies, period." We are really, really, really struggling to, to do our job the way we know that this community deserves, because we just simply don't have the numbers. And so, I think that's incredibly important. I, too, am worried, we have no control. And when we talk about the state troopers that are embedded within our department, I know five actually, uh, even respond to calls for service, for instance, um, as well as the ATF and the FBI. Um, we have no control over whether or not that funding continues and whether or not our community continues to be prioritized. Um, so, as early as next year, we could see an extraction of all of that personnel. And if that was to happen, I think it would be crippling, uh, for our department. So, I think we always need to also keep that in mind. I did have a quick question, um, I was shaking my head as, as if I knew what you were talking about, um, but I had no idea, and still have no idea what a firing range decelerator trap is. Could you tell me what that is?
Yeah, it's, it's basically at the end of the range, uh, where the bullets get, um, deflected, and they, they get put down into a trap, they got to be cleaned out. Just the wear and tear since 1998, they're, they're beyond a point of repair. So, we've done some minor repairs to them, but now they actually have to be replaced. So, you know, as the, the bullets go downrange, they get trapped into this, what they call decelerator.
We have one final question, and if we look on page four of nine, under charges for service for public safety, we have police accident reports, and they were budgeted, um, for $15,000 this current budget year. The year-end projection is 300,000, and we're budgeting 300,000 for next year. Can somebody give me an idea as to, uh, what that increase, um, has to do with? I understand our roads are bad, but I didn't think they were quite that bad.
I, I cannot 100% answer that question, other than I believe it could be a typo to 30,000 instead of 300,000. But I will certainly, uh, sit down with Angie and we'll, we'll figure out if that's a typo or not.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, chief, and we appreciate the work that, um, you and the men and women of the Lansing Police Department do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued support, appreciate it.
You're welcome. And that takes us to Joan Jackson Johnson with Human Relations and Community Service. Joan, if you could please come up to the front and you can take over the chief's, um, seat. Do you have some material you'd like Angie to pass out for you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Councilmember, Samantha. HRCS staff does a wonderful job. We partner with many of the other city departments and work on a number of different things.
Get your green light on, on the mic.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Saying that the staff works really hard, and we partner with a number of other city departments, uh, including LPD, LFD, and, uh, a number of others. HRCS engages in a complex system with housing and urban development, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, area agencies and community members to invest in the enhancement of human effectiveness in our community. It is a complex system with uncertainties, multiple stakeholders, and inherent unpredictability. Yet, we work tirelessly toward best practices to strengthen, empower, and educate the most vulnerable in our community. Fighting poverty is at the core of the basic mission of HRCS. The department is collaborating with a nationally renowned poverty solution expert, Dr. Marcella Wilson, who is a CEO and founder of Transition to Success, a model of fighting poverty and drive self-sufficiency, and author of Diagnosis Poverty, A New Approach for Understanding and Treating an Epidemic, and other local organizations to develop an organized approach to reduce poverty in our city. When you look at the numbers, the poverty rate in Lansing is 27.1, which means that one out of every 3.7 residents in Lansing is in poverty. The rate across the state is 15.6, meaning Lansing has a dramatic higher-than-average percentage of residents below the poverty line when compared to the rest of Michigan. We look at a needs gap and priori, priorities for budget. Each year, HRCS hosts a community forum inviting agencies, organizations, and community members to discuss and identify challenges in the community, their relevance to a healthy environment, and cost-effective solutions. The return on the city's 1.25% of the budget is estimated to be 10 times that funding. Although the investment into each program is relatively a small fraction, it influences the overall commitment of human service investment in the community. Unlike other departments, HRCS competes for federal, state, uh, and no-income housing funding for our area, which this year was projected over $3 million. Uh, HUD, with a little over 2, uh, 2.5 million, Michigan State Housing Development, 4- $453,000, which rounded up is about $3 million. Out of that, we receive over $225,000 to manage and report on these. And we have to utilize the Federal Homeless Information Management System that really tracks all of the people receiving services through this department. We, the mission of our department is to foster well-function in the connected community through coordination of human services, dispute mediation, reconciliation services, complaint investigation, grant development, and implement federal, state, and local mandates. Last year, we did our community forum and made decisions with that based on the distribution of $1,660,000 to more than 90 human service agencies to address basic need. At least, again, 10 times that comes back in the community through an estimated $16,120,000 in leverage dollars, both state and federal. HR oversaw $3,123,000-plus in federal and state grant to address homelessness, at-risk individuals, including the $230-plus thousand in administrative system in our HR, the Homeless Information Management System. HRCS acts as a collaborative applicant for our HUD dollars, for the local continuum of care. Inter-agency Planning Body provides grant applications and strategic planning expertise. This past year, we received Housing Choice vouchers in a number of 530, which is Lansing Housing Commission, but the majority, well, not Lansing Housing Commission with that. All of these were from the state. Our problem has been finding landlords that will work with us, that would receive those subsidies. And as a result of that, you know, Joe McDonald in our office works really hard to do the landlord rental program. It's helped in some ways, but we are fighting not to lose any of those vouchers because of our inability to place people. We can utilize the Greater Lansing area, which would include Lansing and all of the surrounding areas. The other thing that we are challenged with is the volume of referrals. We, thousands in a year. And a lot of those, we're plugging individuals with resources around evictions. And we have a program that we work specifically with Lansing Housing Commission on. Someone is paying $10 a month for rent and they're going to be evicted. We have a failed system. We have to work with them. We have to help people to maintain that. And one of the things that we do is if you get a dollar from us, we make you participate in the Financial Empowerment Program, which, again, is the education and empowerment. If people don't do that, they can't come back knocking on the door again. Another bigger piece is utility assistance. We work with the state. We work with BWL and St. Vincent's of Paul. We have people that, I think, bill that into their budgets for the year. Utility bills right now are ranging from, you know, $700, $800 to $5,000 or $6,000, which means that people just not paying. BWL is a good partner. Salvation Army is another one that has had some money through the state to do that with. And we also use True North. And then, the, there's another program out of Jackson that we also partner with. And so, we aren't doing our job when we're having the repetition. And that's the importance of the Financial Empowerment Program that we continue to and have to really work hard at utilizing. Food security is another issue in our community. And this past year, we distributed over 500 tons of food to 6,785 households. In addition to that, we do a gap-feeding program when our children are out of school and we know that they are missing the 10 free meals a week at school. We did a study several years ago that when kids were in school, they were going home, they still were missing 8.2 meals, which in many cases, they weren't going home, you know, to what was needed. So, with this gap-feeding program, we started out initially with stacked lunches and realized that the whole family was trying to eat out of that. So, we work with Myers, St. Vincent's of Paul, and Value Land to help with that. Myers gives us money and they also will collect weeks of discounts to help families. And with those, we still have the Greater Lansing Food Bank to bring food there too, so that we can really increase what we're doing for families. Our two big annual events a year, the Connect for Kids is one of the biggest programs. Last year, we served over 5,000 kids at that program and get a lot of, you know, financial support from Jackson National, just, you know, just everyone around the corner, Kelly Dean, et cetera. And then, our Community Connect, which we're doing with the adults and we participate with Holy Cross, AKA VOA, with the Veterans Program. And the mayor will have some great news to announce very soon in reference to our veterans' number in the community. I mentioned Joe's eviction prevention program of working with landlords. But with the eviction prevention, people who, again, are at risk with landlords, we're providing some mediation services in hopes that we can salvage, you know, some of those contracts so that people don't come back through our system as homeless. It costs us so much more to allow people to become homeless than it does to try to work with the landlord and the state to keep them housed. The lack of stability for the kids is certainly another huge issue when they're bouncing from here to there. Unfortunately, with the HUD definition, if I become homeless and I move in with my sister, I'm not homeless and I'm not eligible for those services. Our motel program, which is housed at Holy Cross, but paid for primarily by the state, we pay $28,000 for the position. We were second, two years in a row, with utilization of hotel dollars compared to Detroit was first. And so, we have been working with Homeless Angels and some of the others with Berkwood. That's not in the city of Lansing, but they do house some people. Is it ideal for us? No, we don't want people, you know, sleeping out in the elements. And so, one of the things we do with regularity and...
Joan, I just need a clarification. You said second in the nation.
No, second in the state, I apologize.
Okay.
Detroit is number one, Lansing was number two.
I was starting to panic there.
I would panic on that one, too. Yes.
Yes.
Why do you think that is? That, I mean, I'm just curious. We're second in the state. Why do you think...
Well, to start with, we, last year, we had about 5,069 roughly homeless individuals. And in the city, we have about 300 beds available for homeless. Now, the city rescue mission has bailed us out with people who are living out in the element and opened the outreach program. And we were struggling with that. They went from zero to over 60. It was licensed for less, so we worked really hard to get those numbers down. And so, they had them sleeping on the floor with just a blanket. When they moved from blankets to a chair because people were getting a little too close, then those numbers dropped and some people went back to the shelters. But we still struggle when the weather is like this with the number of people that are outside sleeping in the elements. So, it all has to do with bed space, bed availability. And the state has requested that we request or require the agencies that we work with to at least allow people to be there for 30 days. So, when you block that 30 days, I mean, you just don't have enough beds here in the city of Lansing. It's the bottom line.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. The Greater Lansing Homeless Annual Report is what we're talking about with those numbers and bed availability. And I can get the specifics of those in terms of what Loaves and Fishes has. Eves, our domestic violence, is the only one we can't give you the specific data with. They don't allow us to count that in that system. We also, through our EO review, 21 construction projects for prevailing wages, resulting in two contractors giving restitution of more than $3,000 to employees. Coming up, again, is this week. We have three weeks with the Diagnosis Poverty Training. We also have a program called Feed the Babies, Keep Them Dry. That's May 11th at Lansing Catholic. We're trying to reduce the number of children that are at extreme risk and some who've died because of not having formula and other things. We push Go Green, not as in Michigan State, but cloth diapers because many families can't afford Pampers. And when you see babies at shelters, sometimes the Pampers weighs more than the babies and many of them are taking the solid mass out and reusing that. And that's just, you know, you see some horrible diaper rashes. Again, what we try to do through feedback from the community is to identify the challenges that we face and the gaps. And one of the things you guys talked about a lot was youth programming. Last year, we worked with Parks and Rec and bought in programs at two Lansing Housing Community sites. And we had a huge gap on the northwest side of Lansing with Crystal Ray. The Crystal Ray's program just did not work and we're looking really hard to try to identify someone over there. We went with one of the churches. They moved on the south side and we won't fund them because that's not where we need programming. We have to identify positive resources over on the northwest side of Lansing. You know, we fund programs like Boys and Girls Club. We're going to do something in public housing this year where we will pay a stipend to young kids working with seniors on gardening. Rather than having them run by and pull up their plants, we want them to weed and work with them and the Housing Authority will help us with that. We also have a new program that I have Renee Freeman working with and that's going and teaching how to maintain housing. I mean, some of the public housing residents either don't know how to clean, don't clean, or don't have the resources to do that. So, we're trying to increase and improve the quality of life of residents there. So, the director, Doug Fleming, is working with us on that as well. We also have the Financial Empowerment Program going there and working on any issues to provide stability and, again, improve the quality of life. But youth programming is something we definitely need to work harder on and to make sure that there are positive outlets, in particular during the summer, for the negative energy that a lot of these kids have. We get a lot of donations from GM, really nice bikes and stuff like that, that we sometimes pass on to the police officers to give out. I was getting ready to get rid of, we have some Detroit bikes, until I found out how much they cost and I don't want parents to, you know, sell those. And so, we're trying to find a way of selling those and putting those resources there. One of the other youth programs that we've kind of struggled with is ITech. We had them going out to public housing and the consistency just isn't there. We're probably cut their, we are cutting their grant this year, but we want more. Lois Bader goes out there to the literacy program and has MSU students working with families. And we have Reach Art Studio going to several of the public housings as well. We have to get resources there and have to really give kids something to dream for. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Joan. Our first is Councilmember Spitzley, then Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate what you do. I know it's a Herculean task and I just wanted to say thank you. One of the things we had heard earlier from the neighborhood and from Andy Crawford was that they have a special project. I think it's called Lift Up. But it's, and maybe that's not the correct name. No, it's Rent Smart. But it's one of those where they're also helping people with rent and assistance. Yeah, and so, I want to make sure that there's not a duplication of effort that's going on.
The only Rent Smart I'm aware of is with Joe McDonald and he has three classes once a month. And he doesn't provide, he provide education programs and working with the landlords, but there's no dollars that are exchanged there. We work with the HHS and St. Vincent's of Paul for those.
I appreciate that. I know I'm old, but I'm pretty sure, but I'm pretty sure that we had a discussion because I specifically asked the question, were they coordinating with you? And so, I need to, I need to pull that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, but I do know that we, she's over financial empowerment.
No, I know, I knew that. I'm sorry, councilmembers, if I'm like off the mark. Okay, so I'm just wondering, like I said, I'm always concerned about duplication of efforts. So, I'm going to figure out what that program is specifically.
And I'll ask her. Samantha might know that, that Andy Crawford said she does a Rent Smart program?
It's on your, it's on her PowerPoint. I pulled up her PowerPoint on page...
It's on Andy's PowerPoint?
It is, page seven.
I think that's through the Office of Financial Empowerment. Honestly, I would have to double-check. I don't know.
That's through our department. Financial empowerment provides us financial education for Joe and Velma Kaiser as well, at all those programs.
All right.
So, what our question would be from Councilmember Spitzley is what does the program do? Is it something different than what is happening in HRCS with Joe McDonald? And if it isn't, then why are they not working together? Thank you.
Because, yep, because I thought it was rent assistance. I thought that's what she said. And so, if that's the case, my question to her was, are you working with your office? Because I know your office is, you know, you guys do it specifically.
Yeah, and we do work with Velma, who's over the rent, over the financial empowerment, but otherwise, no.
Okay, Vice President Spatafor.
Joan, again, echo the sentiments of Councilmember Spitzley. I just really appreciate the work that your department does and so many agencies you work with. I do have a couple of questions regarding the city of Lansing's human rights ordinance as it pertains to the provision of services and contracts that your department signs. Do all agencies that receive funds from the city have to conform to our human rights ordinance?
Yes.
So, I have a question then. Recently, April 16th, St. Vincent's of Paul or St. Vincent's Catholic Charities has sued the state for the privilege to continue to discriminate against LGBT couples related to adoption services. How does that comport with our human rights ordinance in their $45,000 to $90,000 out of contract?
St. Vincent Catholic Charities does not receive any dollars from us. We dropped their program. Some of the names on here don't reflect the changes. We work with St. Vincent's of Paul on South Washington. We discontinued our contract several years ago, the federal dollars that St. Vincent's Catholic Charities received because they felt we needed to give them more money to cover their administrative overcosts. So, anything that you have, we have on here with St. Vincent's would be furniture, rent, and utilities at St. Vincent's of Paul on South Washington, the thrift store.
Okay, there's two on here.
It's several that they receive.
Maybe Angie can help clarify.
On page two of three.
On page two of three, there's two St. Vincent's listings.
The one is for our mobile food pantry. The other one is for utilities, which we're going to change because we don't need as much. Well, I guess we did reduce that here. But those are the two and it has nothing to do with St. Vincent's Catholic Charities, period.
So, I see another line item for the mobile food pantry of $40,000.
That one goes to the Greater Lansing Food Bank.
Is there maybe a more updated version of this? We might be able to get our hands on it.
We struggle sometimes with name changes. And so, maybe Angie can help us to update the list here with the accurate names on here.
Very good. Your first answer to the first question was great, so thank you. But I'd like to look at it.
Zero, they had some other challenges as well. And so, we discontinued our working relationship. Now, they applied again this year for the dollars and we had to say no based on some of the challenges that we faced in the past and also your statement in reference to the lawsuit.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that and I appreciate that answer very much.
If we could have this reviewed and any corrections on names and get it back to us, we would appreciate that. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Joan, for what you do. We had this discussion about the 575 vouchers and I asked you at that time if you were reaching out regionally and you said no. So, I hope that has changed and that you are now going to the Greater Lansing area rather than lose those vouchers. Because we need to have a regional approach to this.
Absolutely, and our grant from HUD says Lansing and the Greater Lansing in the balance of Inham County is how it reads. However, we, sometimes because of locations and the lack of transportation, that people want to, you know, come to this area.
Well, that's nice, but if they need a place to stay, let's get them in a place to stay.
Yeah, they have to make that decision themselves. We can't push them, although we are working in Hope with some, a couple of new developments. We work in Hazlitt with a couple of new developments and East Lansing as well. But again, the majority want to flock to...
Well, and I would think they would prefer this over being homeless.
Well, I'd like to think so, too.
Thank you. The other thing is, is I notice a lot of the money here. Thank you. The other thing is, is I notice a lot of the money here. And when my colleague asked, why do we have so much homelessness? I think we have to acknowledge that we have a mental health crisis. We have an addiction crisis. We have an alcohol crisis. And we have a lack of skill crisis. And a lot of what I see going out is for children. And that's great, but it's the adults that are going to change the lives of those children. And I'm really, I would much rather see a whole lot more money going to community mental health, National Council on Alcoholism, some educational opportunities for adults. I would like to see that. Rather than continuing, I mean, we have to keep people comfortable, don't get me wrong. But rather than to put all of our emphasis on keeping people comfortable in their poverty, I would like to see much more resources going to helping to lift them out and scaffold through things like education, carefree medical, community mental health, substance acute detox. There's just not that much money going to these critical services.
Okay, what I will provide for you is a copy of the federal dollars. This is just city dollars. And you'll see where with community mental health, we recognize what you're saying, we're moving their budget from 50 to $75,000 this year. Now, they also get federal dollars. The substance abuse issues, we work with them as well and they get direct dollars. It's pass-through dollars from us to that program and a number of others that address. When we look at our program and our year-end summary, the key reasons for homelessness, substance abuse, mental health at the top. And then, one of the other things that's added to those numbers has been the number of landlords that have failed and, you know, their houses go into foreclosure. So, we track all of that through the federal system. But to help you to understand the total dollar amount, we will prepare for you the dollars that, that, what is it, 3 million that we're getting and the agencies that receive, you know, some of that and the accountability that's involved.
And I, and I would appreciate that because although a lot of these are very nice and very fluffy, I, I think we really need to spend our dollars on the meat and potatoes and really help people get to a place in life where they don't have to depend on that rotten house that they're living in with a crummy landlord. And that we don't, we're not looking at 5,000 people in the Lansing region that are homeless. And, I mean, we really need to start addressing the issues that are causing this.
I think when you see the federal.
So, if you could get that for me, I would appreciate.
We'll get that to you tomorrow because we have that. But this was focusing on, you know, the City of Lansing dollars here. But sure, perhaps.
Thank you, thank you very much, Joan. Councilmember Dunbar.
Hey there.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. I, I would like to clarify and maybe, I, I understand what you're saying. It takes a while for the books to catch up. But with St. Vincent Catholic Charities being listed on here as St. Vincent Catholic Charities, who gets the money now?
St. Vincent's DePaul, but it's not get that money. This is a different program. So, it goes to St. Vincent's DePaul.
Could we update that?
Yeah, that's what they talked about and I just.
I guess I'm looking at Angie more than, because I realize, I know you said that earlier.
I'll get, I'll go with Joan on that. I'll have to find out what account we're talking about. I see which one here, but I'll have to find out which one it should be. But we'll get that.
There are several in here that need to be changed. So, we will definitely do that and give you the update.
Awesome. And then, in the contracts that all of the subcontractors sign, there is a pretty lengthy equal employment opportunity provision that is spelled out in there. I know that, I, I can't guarantee everybody reads the whole thing when it goes through, but I know one thing that maybe we could do is add another page and just attach the Human Rights Ordinance, like just the little clauses, as a, as a separate page. Because at the county, when you go through, it's part of the, it's part of the contract, but it's not part of the language written in the contract. It's like referenced by.
The boilerplate language is separate, okay. And I'll talk with GM's office in reference to that. The only one agency that's given us the blues about that has been the Lansing City Rescue Mission. And we can't go through and change the boilerplate language for an agency. We can try to address their concerns because of the great work that they're doing, but we aren't going to change our expectations.
Right. Awesome. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Joan? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much for coming down and for the work that you do and the lives that you change. Thank you very much.
Will you guys be voting on this later, the budget that we're submitting or?
That, that will come on the 20th. So, if people have questions on anything, they'll, we'll make sure that we reach out to you.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that a couple of councilmembers will recuse themselves because of.
Yep.
All right.
And, and we'll make sure we do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have, next is IT. As IT is getting set up, I want to go quickly to A, which is the noise waiver for weekend for rehabilitation of Cesar Chavez Avenue. This is to. Okay, this is to approve it because the same night that we have the public hearing on the, tonight, the hearings tonight and they need it approved tonight. So, with that, Vice President Spatafor.
I move the resolution for a public hearing.
No, we're.
For a special noise permit to allow work, to allow for work on weekdays and weekends for the period of April 29th through October 10th, 2019 for water main work and milling and resurfacing of Cesar Chavez and Washington Avenue. There's three areas on that. If you'd like me to read which those are.
No, that's okay. And the motion is before us. And again, we have the public hearing tonight. Unless there is a great deal of outcry from the public, we will also be passing this to make sure that they meet their contracts. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon.
Let you start with your presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
If the green light's on, we're good.
I just want to make sure. I have a tendency to sometimes be soft spoken. The mission of the IT department is to enable citizen-centered government in collaboration with business units or the departments with the City of Lansing and facilitate responsive, cost-effective, innovative solutions. And we've distilled that down to be, we are smart, city-focused. We are hoping to take the city from the way we used to do business to a new paradigm of doing business where we're more efficient and we're smarter in how we use. I want to spend a couple of minutes today because I know it came up on how the IT budget is built. A lot of the department heads ask me that and I've been watching videos. And so, I know that that was one of the questions. Perfect. So, the operational budget, so in IT land, there's two budgets. There's operational budget and there's the capital budget. For those who are here that know that, that's great. But I also want to make sure that those who are watching understand that as well. The operational budget is for the items that we already own and supporting those services. So, think of contractual services that will be companies like General Code that helps us with the laser feature system. We call them in when we need big guns. We use a company called Wit who helps us with the data analytics platform. Due Point that does infrastructure services. Then you have software maintenance. And software is probably outside of personnel, the next largest item that exists inside of our budget. And that software is a myriad of things that exist inside of the city. So, today, we support over 57 software programs internally. Hardware, I know there was some discussion on infrastructure services and how much space police video is taking up. That is part of that hardware budget and that's how we fund the expansion and the support of that going forward. Miscellaneous operating is kind of the things that makes my department run internally. So, niceties of like having coffee or water, that's how we, we fund that stuff as well as small trinkets. If someone needs an accessory for their phone, we fund that out of that. Telecommunications is both phone, your desk phones, as well as all of the circuits that connect the locations together. So, if you think of a park department being able to talk to City Hall, being able to talk to the data centers, that's what ties it all together. And then, last but not least, training. So, it's no surprise. I started three years ago. The City of Lansing had, we have two types of employees inside of the IT department. We had people that were mainframe operators that we retooled to be able to do some of the work that we do in a modern environment. And they're doing incredible job, but we had to train them. And then, what we also have is people that are newer to the IT industry and they're fresh out of college. They're making a huge impact as well in bringing energy to the department. And we incorporate the training component. So, on the next slide, what we have is the chargeback model. And you get to see the smorgasbord of everything that we're charging back with and how we, we build that budget. So, to give you a comparison of what our operational budget looks like, and you compare us to industry norms, today, if you take roughly about 870 employees and you take $6.3 million, we are paying about $5,727 per employee. But the national average is that people are paying $7,900 per employee. So, we are about 20% lower than the national average. And we somehow or another make it happen. So, the capital budget, this is kind of a new paradigm. And what we started to do is I meet with every department head. And what we try to figure out is what are the goals for that department? What are the deficiencies or operational efficiencies that we need to bring? And we prefer that they do not give us what software they want, but they define a business problem. And when we understand the business problem, we then try to find solutions that we, will be able to meet their business challenges. And so, what we do is we rank, we rank the problems based on business value or organizational risk. And the idea behind that is something with the largest business risk and the largest business value, organizational risk, business value, those are the projects that have become priority one projects. And we want to grease the skids and make sure those things happen. Then the next, and that will be at the enterprise level, the next level will be at a departmental level. And we rank the same way. And those will be our P2 projects based on risk and our value. And then, we finally go to medium, anything that's considered medium, those are the nice to haves. So, when we looked, if you look at the slide that says priorities, it kind of outlines what I just said to you. So, you have high business risk, high business value, high business risk department, high business risk value for department, and then medium business risk, medium business value. So, looking at the projects that were approved by the mayor's office, so, we come up with these priorities and we sit down with the mayor's office and we make a recommendation. And so, the SIP budget for this year is five projects. And we consider these to be the highest organizational risk or business value for the City of Lansing. Yes, Ms. Spitzley?
Oh, I wasn't, no, I wasn't.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm.
You go ahead.
Oh, okay. I saw her hand up. So, in, in this case, right, so, the fire RMS, the product that we use is Zoll and that is considered to be end of life. The fire department requires a records management system. It is mandated. And so, that is a high business risk. The value is debatable, but it's a business risk and so, we have to address it. I'm going to come back to iPads for fire in one second because that's going to make a little bit more sense if I do it later. Computers for fire, so the, the fire department has computers that has to be ruggedized and they're about 10 years old. And it is time for those to be replaced. And those computers run roughly about $4,000 a machine because they're built to be, for extreme circumstances. Cold weather, something falls on it, it continues to operate. And the same thing with the police department. And so, what we're looking at is we have to replace those computers for both police and fire, which is driving up the capital improvement projects for the City of Lansing. And then, last but not least, you've seen this before, we're continuing to replace old workstations throughout the city. And so, you have that $100,000 placeholder. iPads for fire. The City of Lansing did, well, not the City of Lansing, Colin did a ride along with the fire department and I went to a couple of fire runs. And it was an amazing day, eye-opening. And I discovered that what they have in front of the fire trucks is, they call it an MDT, Mobile Device Unit or something to that effect. It's really just a computer. And all this computer does is they accept calls from the CAD system. But they don't need anything else. And we are partnering with Inham County to deploy a mobile application that will do the same thing. And instead of buying a $4,000 computer, you can buy an iPad that ranges in cost around $1,000 to $1,500, basically saving 75% of the money that we would have spent on a computer. So, giving you a background on those items. So, the capital budget, we get to see, next slide please. Thank you. How things get included.
One moment, Colin.
Sure, fire away.
Vice President Spatafor.
Sorry to interrupt you specifically on this line. You mentioned the fire, sorry, computers for fire, that our lease is up and we need to replace the machines. So, we had a 10-year lease on computers. Is that?
No.
No?
It's, so clarification. We did an interim lease because their computers were that bad. And the interim lease was for one year. And the reason why we did it for one year was because Panasonic, who makes the Toughbooks, they only go up to 32 gigs of RAM. Sorry if I'm talking nerd talk, but they only go up to 32 gigs of RAM. And the newer model, sorry, they only went to 16 gigs of RAM. And the new model goes up to 32 gigs of RAM. And we know that the computers are going to be around for five years. So, we didn't want to lock them in into a situation where the new model comes out, which will be better for long-term needs for them and they retract.
So, last year, you replaced the 10-year-old machines. But we've run a lease now and this $90,000 is to buy new computers minus the iPads?
Correct. And, well, it's, yes. And to add, the creative leasing that we did, 100% of the dollars that we put to do that one-year lease will be rebated back to the city. And so, we've lost, basically, we were able to get loaner computers via Panasonic for one year at no cost to the City of Lansing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
So, capital budget. So, as I sit down with the departments and we explore their needs, if there's an enterprise project, something that affects multiple departments, we include that into the IT budget. We gravitate, we say, look, we're going to work towards those. And then, anything that is departmental facing, if it's more than $15,000, those go into the IT budget. So, I know there was questions about a $15,000 laser feature thing because it was $15,000 or less, that would exist in the courts budget because it was not an enterprise project and it didn't gravitate to, to the point where we wouldn't incorporate into IT. Any questions? Please.
Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just have a, I guess, I was going to save these for the end, but you brought it up here. So, $15,000 might not gravitate to the level of enterprise or sort of department above or whatever the standard is. But why would courts be assessed for fire department technology when they clearly need a piece of software and they're being assessed quite a bit for technology and now come to find out also for phone, which is part of this budget?
So, courts is not being assessed for fire technology? I'm not sure.
Well, yeah. If, if new computers for the fire department are enterprise fund that determine, that dictates priority one spending from your, from the IT department.
You're talking about for SIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Out of that $7 million that goes into IT, right, that the SIP comes out of IT's $7 million annual funding, notwithstanding the operations staff? Is that correct? SIP comes from where?
SIP comes from police.
Yeah, okay. If you go to page 39 of 41 of the other funds line item detail, it, it displays the IT budget and it shows the incoming monies and the monies being spent. The, the capital projects that we're talking about amount to $800,000. Of those amounts, you'll see that charges coming from departments is actually $6.3 million. So, it's less than that amount. The amount that, that is being funded through capital, the vast majority of that is actually coming from prior year monies that have accumulated in the fund. And the reason for treating this, and it's a lot like our fleet fund, like a, what we call a special, or I'm sorry, an internal service fund, is that all the departments are charged. There's a few different reasons for that, but one of those is that any leftover monies then stays in the fund. If it was in the general fund, it would all go back to the general fund. This is a way to be able to fund further IT needs, just like our fleet, fleet fund, I'm sorry, is to, to be able to, be able to somewhat save money for future needs because we know that there's going to be ongoing technology needs into the future. So, it's a way, it's a funding.
I appreciate that. And you've, you've answered that question in that way before, but wouldn't it make sense and be more honest to put every technology need into the technology budget? Like the $15,000 SIP request that we got from courts for laser feature, which is a technology program that, as I understand, we already use?
Yes, it's just an expansion. It's basically for professional services for the courts.
Correct. Are they part of the City of Lansing technically?
Yes.
Yes.
So, wouldn't it be more honest than rather having them request it through a different line item to put it through the IT budget? If there's a fund balance or surplus in that, in that, the, the internal services fund, wouldn't that make more sense? I mean, just, maybe, this is, it seems to be a systemic issue that's, that's sticking in my craw is that every year, we sit here, and this has only been my second go-around, so I apologize if it doesn't happen every year, but it's happened every year I've been here. so I apologize if it doesn't happen every year, but it's happened every year I've been here. Department budget heads, department heads sit here, present their budget, talk about their technology needs and don't feel their technology needs are being addressed through the large assessments that they pay into the internal services fund, which I don't argue it's not being used for good causes. But what seems to happen is their budgets have to absorb a larger increase in other line items to pay for things that should be provided by the city technology department.
Maybe we should go to the next slide and I can talk about how the budget is actually built.
Okay, but won't that still not address my concern that?
We can certainly talk about your concern, you know, with it. And so what you're talking about is a style thing, right? Do we, does IT take every technology component and absorb it into their, into the budget? There was a business decision that we made.
Who?
This was in the previous administration. We made that, the watermark is, we absorb it. And then if a department wants that $15,000 or $10,000 or whatever that is, they will make the business case for it because IT cannot make the business case for every, every component.
So maybe Angie.
The reverse, the reverse of what would happen is, a department wants to get a $500 conference room phone and they're requesting that. And IT would then have to fight for every conference room phone or every small component, which will become time consuming.
Angie, maybe you can also answer this question then. If the courts ask for $15,000 in their, what line item was that?
I think it was their miscellaneous operating or contractual services or something like that, yeah.
So next year, when their budget's presented to us, is it minus $15,000 in miscellaneous operating? Or is it now absorbing CIP? And we are also putting another $15,000 into the miscellaneous operating budget that won't get used on laser feature expansion?
So it would be moved into the IT budget in the second year. And the first year, when it's first implemented, when it gets into, if it goes forward and is, and is a, something that is to stay within the budget, then it would go over to the IT budget.
And the assessment takes care of that?
Correct, correct.
What happens to the line item for miscellaneous operating? Does that go down by $15,000?
The next year it wouldn't be needed, correct. But it would be somewhat in the IT allocation.
Right, that makes, that part makes sense.
So.
And so if I could, if I could clarify too, what I was getting to earlier when I said about the difference between the departmental charge. Basically, the departmental charges that each department is getting basically funds the IT department. So we have ongoing maintenance that's needed and ongoing technical support. And that is what the departments are being charged. The capital, now, we would like to be able to charge even more, just like with the Fleet Fund, to be able to have a full replacement of, of software and hardware that are needed going forward. But that's obviously competition of needed dollars. So in this budget is reflected that, basically, the department. So in terms of your question about, is the court, for instance, subsidizing the, the fire budget not in this current budget year because each of the departments are paying towards the operations of the, the ongoing operations of the department? If that helps it on.
Excluding the capital?
Correct, because the capital is coming from prior year monies.
That's, that's what's on the next slide.
Okay.
So on the next slide, the ask was.
And, and before you go any further, just a couple of announcements. One, we are feed to the public they're working on. So if somebody comes in and is in the middle of this on, on City TV, we are working on that. The other is, we realize that it is time for council, the council meeting, but we are continuing with our committee of a whole and finishing up with the IT budget. And we'll continue that until we have our council meeting. Council member Dunbar, did you have a question that played with the same questions that council member Spatafor was? Or is it something else?
I did, but I'm going to let the presentation go to see the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the ask for this year with SIP and operational budget, we were $7.136 million, so $7.1 million. And because the IT department carries a fund balance, the idea behind the fund balance is to take this thing out of large capital expenditures that will take place. So if you think of an IT department, we buy, we buy a product. So year number one is high cost and then it drops. And then five years later, we have to buy that product again. So there's this huge hill and valley. And what the fund balance allows us to do is take some of that and we reduce how much you have to spend going into, from year one to year five. So you don't have as extreme highs and lows and it makes the department more predictable. So in this case, with the fund balance that we had, we have $6.3 million. And we minus department-specific charges. And what is the department-specific charge? If there's a piece of software that is only used by a specific department, we do not charge all departments for it. For example, the, the HR department does not use the police records management system. So therefore, we do not charge the operational costs for the police records management system to HR. We charge that exclusively to the police department. And sure, you guys, you all get the idea behind that. So you minus 460. And so what is going back or spread across all of the departments is 5.8 million dollars. At 5.8 million dollars, what we do is, equation is showed below. We take that number and we divide it by two. And the idea behind that is, sorry, take that back. The total, we divided by two and then we divided by the total number of users inside of the city, which is 850, 870. And the idea behind that is, we want to get all of the computers, all of the users inside of the city, and we charge half of that number because you have some departments that are heavy with people. So they have a lot of people, very few computers. And then you have other departments that are heavy with computers and very light with people. So they may have a lot of kiosks or kind of front desk type machines. And so we distribute the costs. And so here's an example for Parks and Rec. They have 24 employees, 28 computers. And their chargeback for employees is $80,000. And then their chargeback for computers is $108, giving a grand total of $188,000.
Counsel, Vice President Spatafor.
Just for a point of clarification, I'm sorry. You mentioned fund balance and then $6.3 million. I don't think that was what you meant. What's the fund balance of the IT department?
Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think two concepts blended in your statement. You said fund balance and $6.3 million. $6.3 million is the revenue charges?
No, the fund balance was exactly $766,000.
That was the fund balance transferred or the entire balance of the fund balance?
That was what the fund balance was for, not last year, but over the last three years. So we save a small amount of money every year. And the goal behind that is, when you have a large expense that's coming,
Sure.
it allows the IT department to fund those expenses so the city doesn't have to figure out how to replace, in this case, $300,000 in.
So the fund balance was depleted to cover that?
Yes.
This year?
Yes.
If it's chosen to be. I mean, it may or may not depend on, depending on needs, correct.
Thank you.
So that concludes the first part, right? How is our budget built? So strategies for FY19. We wanted to improve the performance and stability of the city's network. We wanted to provide timely, quality service to our customers. We wanted to maintain a high security for computing services throughout the city. And we wanted to work with business units to transform workflows utilizing enterprise applications that exist. So the next slide, FY19, key performance indicators. The city wants to maintain 99.99% uptime across all services. And we achieved 99.93, so we did not hit the mark. But we wanted to complete 90% of our help desk tickets within the SLA and 85% of our tickets were completed. Meeting the service level agreements that we have with departments. The caveat is, is that, you know, over the last two years, we've had an incremental or exponential increase in the amount of tickets that we're processing. So when I came onboard with the city of Lansing, four, well, three years ago, we were processing somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 tickets and 50% of them were being completed within one day. Today, we're in a situation where we're processing 9,000 tickets throughout the city. And in that 9,000 tickets, 78% of them are being completed in one day. And the added caveat is, we had a dip in personnel this fiscal year. So we went from four people operating the help desk to two people operating the help desk. So also to give you an idea of what ratios look like, typically organizations strive for 1 to 70. So for every 70 people or computers, you have one person at the help desk. Today, we're operating when we have four people at a much lower number than that. So it's closer to 1 to 200.
Just a quick clarification on the information that you just provided us. If, if we are up in the number of help tickets and we've been buying new equipment, what do you see as the downfall? Is it the user or is it the equipment?
It's not the equipment. Some of it is related to projects. So for example, if a new project goes live and more technology is being introduced into multiple departments, you're going to have an increase in tickets because service transition is where you start to have most of your complaints. So to use an example, we just did an update on the rec track system. It hasn't been updated for several years in Parks and Rec. When that project goes live, there's an increase in tickets because it's a service transition. The police department just went from one body camera, body cam vendor to another body cam vendor to find synergies and to have a better architecture. The number of tickets with LPD increased because there was a service transition. And what eventually happens is, it stabilizes after the product goes live.
All right, thank you.
So next slide. We are seeing a need for after-hours support. The after-hours support, we haven't had a ton of tickets that's in that world. It's about 160. I know it's a little bit of an eye chart. And the busiest day for after-hours support is on Sundays. But the biggest consumer of putting in tickets in after, for after-hours support is either A, the police department, or B, the city clerk's office. And the city clerk's office is usually when it's around election time, we get a need for support as well as the police department. Obviously, if their computers are down or they're not able to operate, we need to provide assistance. So there is, we are currently working with the mayor's office to come up with a plan to address after-hours support utilizing the resources that we have. Next slide, please. Thank you. External, sorry, that's a typo in that, that should be external security overview. So the city of Lansing thrives to be, we're pushing to be better at cybersecurity. And if you look at that blue ribbon, that is where our contemporaries are. And as you can see, we operate above the bar. So the investments that we made for the last three years, we have a better ranking. And, you know, my mom would be disappointed because I'm not all As, but we are doing very good from a cybersecurity perspective. The vendor that we use that ranks us actually compares all government agencies and we're ranked better than 99% of our contemporaries as far as cybersecurity is concerned, from an external perspective. From an internal perspective, next slide. You will see that while we're operating below the bar, there is an issue where we're not quite where we want to be. So in this graph, what you will see is, red is obviously the worst. Yellow, you're kind of in the middle. Green, 330 below with their rank score, you're actually in the best place. So we are currently working with department heads and some of the technology inside of the city of Lansing is somewhat antiquated. And we're working with vendors and pushing them to upgrade critical systems in order to make sure that citizen data is safe. Workstation replacement. So we completed the replacement of 115 workstations inside of the city of Lansing. And we're current, we're currently moving in the trend of, we want to have a five-year replacement plan in all computers inside of the city. The advantage of doing that is, from a cybersecurity perspective, obviously, we're safe. From a business perspective, people don't want computers that are nine, 10 years old because it makes them less efficient and want to. Completed projects in this fiscal year, this is a smorgasbord. We've touched quite a bit of departments in upgrading their technology. We've also done some outside-facing projects where we've created list groups where committees in a whole are able to access city resources. And it was a low-cost solution to a problem that would have been cost prohibitive. And then the remaining projects for this fiscal year. This fiscal year was unique in the sense that we had a lot of multiple priorities. We have departments were looking to implement new things and some of them increased the help desk ticket load. We also had other smaller projects that were thrown at us that we had to slip, slip through the system. But we're hoping to finish these projects that are slated to be finished in June by the end of this fiscal year. Major project, enterprise content management. The courts is just about finished with their E-file system with their records management system. So we'll be one of the pioneers in this area with records management. We've always.
Colin, for City TV, we're on slide 19, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead, thank you.
We've also worked on, we're working with HR to finish up some stuff with labor relations workflow inside of that same system. There's a FOIA workflow that we worked with both the police department and the office of city attorney to work through. And that will be going live hopefully in the next month or so. We built all of the web forums inside of a workflow where we can measure citizen interaction. And departments will then be able to route inside of that same system. And then we're integrating with GIS and data analytics systems so we can see exactly what's taking place and you can map data to parcels and, you know, some stuff that will bring some cool efficiency to the departments. And last but not least, I'm sure you guys are not tired of hearing about medical marijuana or marijuana. We are, we did the marijuana applications online and we're working with the city clerk's office to test that. So we will streamline the entire workflow where people can upload their business cases and it will route appropriately throughout the city. Three-year plan. We want to continue to expand the connectivity for city use. We want to continue the city, it's a cybersecurity program. We want to do more workflow optimization and we want to utilize data to make data-driven decisions. For the city of Lansing to become a smart city. Smart cities, it's a buzzword and now, and everyone tries to sell you technology. But the three other components that, you know, we're working in conjunction with the mayor's offices, we want to do data-driven decisions, we want to engage citizens with the city and then we want a level of transparency. And so everything over the next three years, it is my recommendation that we continue to do smart city-driven type things. Wireless. I know wireless was a hot topic, so I want to talk about wireless. The city of Lansing uses two different wireless systems today. We use cellular for cameras, for public safety cameras. But we are looking to deploy Wi-Fi strategically for multiple reasons. The Wi-Fi, make sure I can be heard. The Wi-Fi adds a couple of things, right? There's SEPA events or events that happens inside of the parks. And the IT department spent an exorbitant amount of time setting up for things like calming ground or other events that will happen. And so Wi-Fi in the parks will reduce the amount of time that we spend with personnel doing that, that setup, because then you can flip a switch and turn it on. The other part that it provides is, if there's someone that wants to do an event, they can actually rent that Wi-Fi for that period of time and they can utilize it as a private thing. So think of a race that may happen. They can use that to upload the race results and not have to tether off their cellphone or they can have it as a private thing if they're having vendors come in so they can perform sales. The other thing that Wi-Fi does is, there's a public safety component. So when you, you use cellular for all of the city cameras, you're now paying cost for each camera. But if you have a Wi-Fi system in place, you can piggyback all of the cameras on that same Wi-Fi system. And the advantage with that is, there's better bandwidth, better throughput, better quality of video. And it allows us to now have that public safety component. So, and then the last, which is not on the budget for this year, but we are pushing to try to see if we can get this in the city. There's a third wireless component which is called LoRa. I know LoRa is a foreign, a foreign term, but think of LoRa as a low-bandwidth, high-distance Wi-Fi network. And what that would provide to our citizens is, you can have basically IoT or Internet of Thing devices connecting to it. So think of garbage cans. If they have a. If they have a small sensor inside of it, they could connect to the LoRa network and report their status. And if someone didn't pick up that, you can now measure that. Think of LoRa being used in parking meters. You put it in a parking meter and instead of the battery having to be changed once a year or twice a year, a LoRa device, the meter battery will last 20 years without requiring replacement because it's very low voltage, very high distance. And so I know wireless is, why do we need wireless in the city? Because smart cities are about connectivity. And these three connection, or connectivity verticals will allow us to better meet the needs of our citizens.
Colin, I don't want to rush you, but could you summarize the next few pages so that we can get to some questions?
Yes. Phishing, cybersecurity. So from a phishing perspective, that is the number one threat with the city. We have done a really good job with cybersecurity. But the biggest risk is between the keyboard and the chair. And so from a government perspective, the biggest, 74% of the breaches is what they call cyber espionage, is just basically phishing events. And so we want to continue to push for the citizens or the people who work for the city to address that. So confirmed security breaches inside of government, 47,000 of them exist. Out of 54,000 total is in our sector. And that's because of 74% of it's phishing. You understand that it's a major deal. Next, actually, the next one was a video. I sped it up. I want to show how easy it is for a phishing attack to take place in the city. Basically, you have free services, you can go ahead and start the video. You have free services that are out there, Google, Hotmail, whatever. And what a hacker does is they will basically Google any one of the members here or Mayor Shore's information, which is what I, I do here. I'm waiting for the video to show. And by Googling the information, they can create an account that looks like Andy Shore. And then they will send a request, hey, look, I want you to be able to do this. And we're more apt to respond if the mayor is sending it, if a city council member is sending it. Matter of fact, I know that there's people who are sitting in front of me today that's gotten a fake email from an Andy Shore account. And it is probably the largest risk that we have from a cybersecurity perspective in the city. And because of that, cybersecurity training is the most important thing. If you can jump over to the slide that has the computer password reset from my fake Andy Shore account, please. Here's the video. Okay. Jump to the next slide. So in that fake Gmail account, I sent an email that looks to be Andy Shore. Next slide, please, for my folks in the back. And the only way you can tell is if you expand the details. When you expand the details, then you see that it's not Andy Shore, but you can see it's Andy Shore 320, took his date of birth and created an account in Gmail. And you can see that it is not him. And that is one of the challenges that faces it. So what we do in the city is we have a very strong cybersecurity training program. And the goal behind that cybersecurity training program, why do we keep doing it? Is because through repetition, we're able to reduce the people who are fish-prone from 27% down to 2%. And we want to continue to raise the bar with compliance with cybersecurity. Workflow optimization. Waiting for my friends in the back.
We're not going to wait on the slides. We need to-
Okay. Workflow optimization, we want, we're working with department heads to reduce the number of printed records that are inside of the city. So today, you have departments that print records and they file it inside of a vault. And what we're hoping to do with Operation Clean Desk is reduce the number of paper records that exist and start to use the systems like laser fish in order to archive that, that data. We want to start to convert things that are web forms or fully deploy that throughout the city. We want to scan legacy documents and make them available appropriately, you know, to citizens and make it available to the people who work inside of the city. And last but not least, we want to do data-driven decisions. Data-driven decisions is you take multiple things and you throw it inside of a pot, right? You have a strategy or a shared vision, data, policies. And based on that, you're able to do data-driven decisions. And so we've built departmental-type dashboards. We found synergy between departments. And we want to move to the predictive, prescriptive modeling. And then in final slide, the progression of data analytics. So you start off with reporting. What does things look like? Then you want to build correlations between departments and throughout the organization and figure out why did it happen? Ultimately, you want to start to provide insights, when will this happen again? And ultimately, you want to get to the point where you become prescriptive. Everyone has an app where you can check your credit score. It says, hey, if I do this, what happens to my credit score? We want the city to be able to, be able to play around with the levers and wonder, hey, if I pull this lever, how does it affect crime? If I pull this lever, how does it affect homelessness? If I pull this lever and you can figure out and up to a high degree of accuracy what the variables are and how it can impact the city. And so that is the end of my presentation.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Couple of questions. So, starting with your actual budget page where we have 39 of 41. The first line on there is revenues, charges to funds. I think one of the things that was confusing and a lot of folks, you know, understanding is that revenue chargeback, these are chargebacks to departments. So it looks like it's revenues coming into the department, but these are actually the expenses of the individual departments that you collect and charge back.
Yes.
So for, for me to help, to help me understand it, I had to take a look at all of the individual IT budgets from every department, add them together and go, oh, $6.3 million. So that made sense for me because I know that we were, we were struggling with that last week. The other thing that I wanted to ask is, how do you determine the allocation? You, you get, you've divided it out by person and by station to make it as equal as possible across the board. But the costs that, that you determine are needed, that 6.3 million. When it is put into the department budgets, what part do you have control over? Do you put only the line in that says IT? Or do you have control over all the other lines that we were looking at? And when we were asking department heads and they say, oh, that's technology too. Do you put that in there or do they put that in there? Or how does, how does that jive? Because I think that that was really confusing for folks, finding out that in multiple departments there was the IT chargeback line and there was other IT. And I know you tried to explain some of that earlier with CIP that's only related to one department, but do you have control over that?
So, the IT chargeback is what I build. I have a spreadsheet that comes up and builds that magical formula based on the number of devices we support. So it's the IT chargeback that's in my universe.
Okay. So when there isn't a charge in a department budget that's outside of that, that is also for IT, do you put it there?
If it's not a chargeback, I do not put it there.
Okay. So I think that we were all thinking that we were going to get answers about all those multiple lines when he got here and he doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like you control those lines.
And some of the departments, without calling out any departments, I know some departments have legacy items that they call technology and they may use it for something else. So if you look at my budget, the detail of my budget, there isn't something that says telecommunications. It's telephone. And some of that is, you know, renaming that in the financial system is kind of messy. But telephone in my world is telephone communications and all of the circuits. But it may just be a limitation of the financial system with renaming that, that line item. I don't know.
Could you give an example of what other charges were taken?
Well, like, like even in, when, when, not even district court. There was one in HR. There was like $15,000 in HR that we asked, what's that for? And it was an IT line, but it's not part of his IT line. So I was asking, did he put that in there or did they put that in there? And, and do you have control over that? So, because we were, yeah, we were confused because there was multiple places and we thought it would all be in one IT line.
Yeah, if it falls below that $15,000 threshold, then it can be within the department budget. But otherwise, it's generally in the IT budget. Now, there, I will say one other exception. There was one other exception because of the mobile in the parks funded through the Parks Village because that's obviously additional funding that can augment what we can fund through the allocation. So there is one other exception to that. That's because of an additional funding source.
Okay.
I will, sorry. I would also say that consolidating everything into the IT budget, the maturity level of the organization is really low as far as that's concerned, right? This is something that started three or four years ago. And even today, I find that there's, I'll have a vendor reach out to me and say, hey, by the way, you know, no one has paid this bill. And we would discover another IT or technology thing under a stone. So some departments continue to carry that. Not 100% sure why, but I do know that there's still technology components that hasn't made it over to my budget yet. And as we find it, we corral them and we give them a home and an owner.
Okay. Okay, so another one that I had written down here is years ago, and it's been a while now since we did this whole transfer of some of the services to DuePoint. I remember there was like a fire and brimstone debate about that up here, about contracting out services to folks who are not city employees. At this point in time, what footprint, what, what is left of the footprint of that?
So DuePoint continues to manage the infrastructure services and project management for the city of Lansing. So we have one project manager and a few infrastructure folks that is supporting us from DuePoint.
Okay. But are they, are they like, I guess, what is their role then? Is it just in the backend?
It is just in the backend. So they're taking care of servers and switches and, and then there is some project management that happens, which is more in the frontend, but that was around for some time as well.
Okay. On the subject of the Wi-Fi that you brought up, that was in the parks and I think you specified the Addado Park. You had said something about renting it.
It could potentially be used as a SEPA. I, I don't think it is at the moment, but it can be something where you're having-
It's not something that would be turned on and then turned off, right?
No.
It'd be just something that they would be getting a dedicated 5G-
Yes.
-for that specific purpose.
It wouldn't be 5G, but it would be Wi-Fi, yes.
It'd be Wi-Fi, okay. And then the, the final question that I have is with regard to, you had mentioned that there's a lot of tickets for after-hours service. And I commend you because the fact that you've gone from 30,000 tickets to 90,000 tickets or three, was it 3,000 to 9,000, I'm adding a zero, I didn't mean to. With less people and your, your, your numbers are up as far as when you're, when they're resolved. To get us back over the 85%, what, how much is needed in the budget to do that? Like, what would you need in order to get us to a place where we could staff to do all the after-hours stuff?
So that's a hybrid, right? We have openings inside of the department for roughly about six people. While we understand the ratio is 70 to 1, we think that we can function with six people, three dedicated to public safety and three dedicated to the rest of the staff. And my guess is that we don't have a high volume, but to do on-call as well as to support, once you do on-call, you have to pay someone for three hours once you call them, according to the CBA. It is my estimation you'll be somewhere around $40,000 to $50,000 in order to do 24 by 7 support with the existing positions that we have inside of the city.
You didn't ask for that?
No. We're working on it.
I guess we need to see whether or not-
Yeah.
-other departments need that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. You said something which I think is, is key. I mean, the, the IT department and you being Director of IT is, you're relatively young. You're three years old, right, roughly?
Yes.
And so, you know, I, I, I heard with amusement that, you know, you're still finding, you know, things that should be on the IT budget. But all in all, I think that when I look at some of your metrics, DuePoint, for, for example, I don't quite remember fire and brimstone, but I do remember a lot of questions being asked about the DuePoint contract and, and rightly so. You know, if we have folks working on contract and we're not hiring them, that was a problem. And I see that you've, you've significantly lowered that. Are, are some of those DuePoint people the after-hours support that Kathy's talking about?
They do some-
Councilmember Dunbar's talking about?
They do some after-hours support for major items. So for example, if you have an infrastructure item fail, DuePoint handles that. Where we are lacking is if a computer fails, that's critical for LPD. If a computer fails that is critical for fire, today, they have to wait till the next business day in order for us to provide the support that they need.
And then, just to, the, the other thing is, so what I'm understanding and hearing from both Angie and maybe you, Ms. Bennet and you, is that the, the threshold is, is $15,000. Anything above $15,000 in is, goes under the heading of the IT budget. Is that what you're, is that what I heard from you?
That has been. We may be revisiting that policy, but yes, that's what it has been, yes.
Okay, all right, that's, all right. I, I can't remember the last one, so, you know, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I have two quick questions and then I don't see any other hands and then we'll move on. We bonded a couple of years back for new computers. Do you remember, Angie, what that amount was off the top of your head?
I'm thinking it was $3 million. I can't remember. It was a three-year bond. It's now expired. It was for hardware as well as, as hardware and software. There was a lot of infrastructure, security things that needed to be-
And was the debt service paid out of the IT budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you get me the amount of what the bond was and what the debt service was?
Yes, but that is expired now. I want to, I want to-
I, I, I heard you.
Okay.
But I want to know what those numbers were. All right, thank you. Thank you, Colin. With that, we will move on. We have one final item before we go into our council meeting. We are to number B, which is the Seventh Amendment to the amended and restated real estate purchase and development agreement between the city of Lansing and Continental Ferguson Lansing LLC. If you will look at your desk, you received two items that were emailed to council. One was the agreement that had the changes that were blue and changes that were red. Those were ones that we had been currently working off of. You will also see at your desk a resolution which outlines the changes which are in the wherefore, their, their whereas clause, which is on page one of five. And then in the amendments on page two of five, which are three, four, five, and B of 14. These were items that were discussed during the presentation and we had asked for more clarification and better understanding of what those were. And those have been revised with the city attorney and with Continental Ferguson. Are there any questions on these? All right, seen, no questions. What we need is a motion to move this out on the floor for tonight for passage. Vice President Spatafor.
I move item 6B.
All right, we have a motion to move this out for a vote this evening. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Passes unanimously. At this time, we will adjourn committee of the whole. We will take a three-minute recess and then come back into the council meeting. We will take a three-minute recess and then come back into the council meeting.